Good morning. We are going to call the morning workshop of the Clickyette County, County Commissioners to order, and we will begin with a discussion regarding the Superior Court Public Defender Services contract. There's people online who are interested in listening, and so make sure those mics are green as well.
Just trying to take a moment to read what you put forward.
Oh, certainly.
If you want to go over it, feel free as well.
Oh, without question. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with all of you here this morning. It's quite a view you have from this room, so hopefully the remnants of the last bit of summer can provide inspiration here before fall falls upon us and everything becomes dark and gloomy. So, we just wanted to go ahead and present to the Commissioners a bit of context for the basis of our request. So before you, you see from what I've been able to put together, looking at the past, what in essence is the last six years, 2023 being the most recent budget going back to 2018, what the county has budgeted for public defense in general, what the county has paid Ms. Hockter and me under our previous contracts, as well as, again, a bit of context, what has been budgeted for both the Prosecutor's Office and the Sheriff's Office.
We got a copy of your contract report from December 21. And I think, I guess to start off, to look at the big picture, we're looking at a pretty significant budget shortfall, and we're having to make it up using, you know, leftover funds that are in, you know, we're spending down what we have available, and we're trying to cut costs where we can. And we're trying to raise revenues where we can, pretty significantly. And it came as a shock to me, at least, with a 33% increase in the Hockters and Land's contract. And the reason it came as a shock to me was when I look at the number of hours on what you submitted for your contract report in 2021, on how many hours that were worked, and we appear, we just managed dollars and cents. And when I ran those numbers of what it said hours worked, it looked like you were making a pretty large increase in comparison to previous years. And I know COVID times and things change, and the courts change over time and how we do things. But I think the number was, Commissioner Christopher, do you recall, $430 an hour thereabouts? When I run the numbers based on what your report says the value is. Where, at that same time, and during COVID, you know, we were paying the full contract price that we agreed to and not saying we did anything wrong, but when the courts were shut down, you know, the defense attorneys at the district court level, who made $75 an hour, didn't get paid anything during that time. You know, they were starving to death. And their $75 an hour versus your, you know, what, and when we run the numbers, it's $430 an hour, was a significant delta that it's hard, it's difficult to find people for district court, and $75 an hour, heck, we paid more for more services than that for pretty much any professional. I think the cleaning company that works upstairs in the road department makes more than that per hour. And so we were trying to bring that up a little bit, knowing that we don't have much room in the budget to make that change. And so I guess, from my perspective, it was that discussion and that question on if you're putting in less time per year based on your, what you submit for your contract reports each year over the preceding years, and granted, things have changed. It seems like in Washington State, they want to not make anything a felony and not have criminal cases. I think it was so, it was best for us to have a conversation on where that looks like it's going in the future in terms of time and how much effort, you know, the public defense and the contract is going to be. And so if you could enlighten me on maybe not everything in that contract report is everything?
I would very much like to address that. So, when you see those contracts, some of our cases, we're with them eight years. So, the only time you see them pop up is when we have technically billed or closed. So, it doesn't mean that they're coming back, it doesn't mean that we're still handling those people. During COVID, we were in the jails, we were working all of the time. What was happening is we were not closing cases. So, we had people at Eastern, we were working with mental health hospitals. While the rest of the counties still shut down and stayed home, we were still going to the jails, we were still communicating with all of our clients because we didn't get to do that, we didn't have that luxury. So, what you're seeing is only when a case ends up closing. I have a gentleman that's at Eastern State Hospital, he was found not guilty by reason of insanity. I spend at least five hours a week with him, I have since I started this contract. None of those hours go in, but he's assigned to me. So, anytime he has a problem, anytime we have to bring up hearings, those are things I have to deal with. My juveniles that I'm assigned to at 12 or 13, I stay with them until they're 18. So, we don't, what you're seeing in those contracts is just when a case closes out, not the probation violations, all of the things that happen in those cases and what we have to do. And there's, I think, Chris can talk about it too, but to be a public defender on this contract, we have to shut our civil practice down so that we are able to take whatever comes out there. So, we can handle everything and not hit our caseload limits, which are required by the state of Washington and the Bar Association. So, we can't take civil cases, we can't do all of those things because we'll be over our allotted amount of cases. We have to handle what's in there, what has been with cases that we've been handling for three or four years that are still there. So, we have an ongoing caseload, as well as whatever comes in. We also have, when you talk about the difference between district court and felony court, there is, I don't believe, anyone in this county that's qualified to do this job. So, the district court, you have no qualifications. You come out of law school, you can do it. Right now, I believe the Prosecutor's Office is hiring $97,000 to start for a deputy prosecuting attorney. That means they graduated from law school, that's it. For our job, for the requirements set by the Bar Association, we have to have so many sex offenses, we have to have so many felonies, so many Class A felonies, everything has to go to trial. It takes years to get that done. So, the qualifications alone, you're talking about someone that's been practicing for 10 years versus someone that's just coming out. So, there is a huge bar. I think for your understanding, it would be similar to engineers, you may have hired them in your public works. There's a PE, someone with a PE that can actually sign off on programs and do things, is different than a person that comes out with an engineering degree. And so, for our qualifications, if you look on those, what a person has to do to qualify so that we don't get disbarred by taking these public defense contracts, and it is a huge qualification. Also, we have to have offices, we have to have staff. So, there is a lot that goes into this contract, I think, that you're not seeing on the paper. But the biggest one is trying to get you to understand how much work we're putting in on cases that aren't showing up on your reports, like my gentleman at Eastern that calls and takes up so much time that we're constantly setting hearings. So, it doesn't, because a case goes to trial and we're done, and we are going to trial quite a bit. So, preparing for these trials and things, when we have people that are, our mental health is a huge issue. So, we might have cases that linger for two years on mental health, trying to get them into Eastern, bed dates, things like that, that aren't going to even show up in the year that they're done. They're going to come two years out. And because of COVID, a lot of those cases, it doesn't mean that we weren't dealing with those cases, but those cases are still getting settled now because everything's shut down. So, we're still dealing with them, we're dealing with their families, we're trying to find housing for them, we're trying to find resources for them, we're trying to find experts that'll come and talk to us, that'll deal with us, that'll take it on a public defense wage. There's so much that goes into it. And I just think it's important because there is a lot more that we're doing, and cases are not settling quickly. In the district courts, those cases were being handled, and then you're seeing them close, because I do district court work as well, and those were closing two and three years out. So, people are still doing the work, but they just all got settled and continued. And then a lot of things weren't charged. But with the felonies, we were still working those cases, we were still doing all of that work. We still had offices, my, I was still paying my employees full time, and we were still working them. They just weren't going to trial, so we just had to keep them with us through that entire period, checking in with their families, doing all of the work that we have to do to put a case together and make sure that they, also bringing motions and all of the changes that happened between Blake, between our trainings, between understanding what happened with the new Supreme Court case, where we had to redo the sentencing grids on every single individual, we had to bring all of those cases back. A lot of those, between the chaos of handling them, we simply didn't bill for any of them, we just handled them. Because our clients came back and they needed to be done quickly. And with the time we got them done, we took care of many of those cases, but it was a big learning curve, it was understanding what's happening, it's staying on top of it, it's making sure that we don't get disbarred, and the qualifications for what we do, every single year goes up.
And if I could also just, and I adopt and endorse everything that Ms. Hockter stated, but your comment, Mr. Commissioner, about, well, the state of Washington seems to be saying there's no such thing as a felony anymore. If that were to be true, you would not see the budgeted numbers for the Prosecutor's Office and the Sheriff's Office to continue to increase at the rate that they are. There is still crime, just because the state of Washington threw the Blake decision, and just, I'm not sure if all Commissioners are aware, is back in February 2021, where the State Supreme Court said, "Our possession law is flawed, and therefore, anybody who was convicted beforehand, those are vacant convictions." And it's as if they never occurred. There was work involved in going back and vacating those, it's not all done. Some convictions are, they're inconsequential. But when it comes up in some venues and future cases, those need to go back and be vacated. But we still see the problems, and I think this is now, it's mushrooming up in a certain, in a certain way. The fentanyl epidemic is outrageous. So, just because you don't see a possession of drugs with that theft of a motor vehicle, or that burglary in the second degree, what have you, it doesn't mean that's not somebody who is still under the effects of drugs, who are allegedly committing crimes, who are allegedly committing felonies, who need that representation. So, just because Blake says no more straight possession of drugs, it doesn't mean all the problems attended to drug possession and use go away, certainly not.
Crime, the burglaries, the issues that we have, and the mental illness that we deal with. So, we are not only felony attorneys, we are counselors, we're healthcare, we are screamed at, we've been threatened, we, I mean, the things that we deal with are, for most people, they'd say, "Just walk, you're insane. You're in a town where it's not, people say, oh, you're doing such a good service," and, I mean...
I would love to just be a lawyer, but it's social worker, surrogate parent, crying towel, what have you. So, yeah, it's not just Chris Land's attorney at law, it's a lot more.
So, you said, both of you, you've shut down your civil caseload, you have no civil caseload on one side?
We take some, but divorces, none. So, none of that, we can't take those and do this. So, where we would be a diverse practice prior to taking on the contract, I did a lot of divorces and things like that. I don't do that at all because I can't. With the caseloads and the weighting and the numbers, you can't go over certain amounts. So, we have to say, okay, this is what we're doing, we're committed to this, we have to have an office, we have to have staff, all of these things are rules in taking this contract for the Office of Public Defense that they require. And so, other things, we have to say, we're not going to take those.
And one other thing, one other factor to consider in that, and yes, I have a small percentage of my practices writing wills. That takes minimal time, and yes, there's still some probate actions that I have that haven't gone and resolved, those two seem to linger. But the, yes, the primary focus, oh, divorce and other civil disputes, I just don't get into that. And part of that reasoning is, if I am representing wife A in a dissolution, and all of a sudden, husband A is charged with an offense, I can't represent husband A now because I represent his, you know, soon-to-be ex-wife in a matter where they are basically adversarial parties. That would be a conflict of interest. So, I have to keep in mind, I have a contracted obligation with both this county as well as Skamania County, not to just be disqualifying myself and then having the county have to undergo the expense of hiring basically conflict counsel. And I'm not sure how much Ms. Hanson and Judge Krog shared with you, but getting conflict counsel here in Goldendale is near impossible. And part of that reasoning is not just our location, yeah, we have attorneys coming over the hill from Yakima or up from Vancouver, but those qualifications, I mean, it just took until this past year that Ms. Hockter was qualified to do a Class A sex offense. Up until that time, I was the only one that could do that. I know maybe one other attorney in Hood River who has that qualification. So, that too, we limit our practice so we're not exposing ourselves to those conflicts that are then going to go ahead and cost the county additional money, more money for those conflict attorneys.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Oh, certainly.
I guess that I have no issue at all as far as with the, how the contract's being administered, the work that you're doing, I, you know, your qualifications, it's not, this is simply about money.
Can I interrupt you just one?
Sure.
The other thing that's coming too, and you've noticed, I'm sure you've noticed it with your employees, but the minimum wage is jumping by $1.25 again. So, in our offices, we've seen it where we have to have competent people that are confidential. And so, hiring an employee when Taco Bell is hiring for $21 an hour, so we have to keep up with that as well. So, that is just, I wanted to say, that's another thing, because it's not only a requirement of the contract that we have staffed that's competent and can do that, but we are also facing, our employment costs are huge as well. And with these big increases that you're seeing, I mean, in the last, if we go the last six years, what minimum wage is done, it's had a huge increase in our office as well and trying to find employees.
Okay.
And I apologize.
No, no, that's good, because that kind of, that comes to my point, as far as when I look, based on the numbers, it is, yes, everyone has had increased costs going back, you know, from, I gotta put my glasses on, because of the, okay, 18. So, the numbers that you provided us from 18 to the proposed in 23, we have all seen increases in those, and we have seen those budgets rise because of those factors, and that is not unique to your industry, your practice, it is across the board. I mean, as you said, Taco Bell is having to adapt to the, we all have to. That's not what we're, at least I'm talking about. When I look, when I run the numbers, so, public defense over the budget from 18 to 23 is proposed, inclusive of what increases that we've done over that, that it's, we're proposed to increase by 23% over that period of time. Prosecuting Attorney's Office over that period of time has increased by 26%. The Sheriff's Office between that time, 18 and 1/2%, and I will remind folks, that's what, there's been two contract amendments in there as far as for labor, we've had, we've been under pressure to increase it. So, again, we recognize that. Your proposal, if we've put that into, that's a 44 and 1/2% increase over that same period. That's the thing I'm having, it seems out of scale to, I'm not, I'm, you know, something that's in line with what's happened with everything else.
We're open to negotiating that. I think what we just wanted to put forward is the fact that we haven't asked for an increase at all. So, all of this is happening, and we did not ask for any increases. Had we asked for one that we thought was in line with what everything else was, that's where we would be. So, we, we're not saying we're not opposed to any negotiating on that, but what we put was what we wanted to show, if we had been keeping up with everyone else as they were increasing, then that's where we felt that we would be, because we haven't been increasing this contract.
Okay, just to, just so we're all working from the same page. I took your 18 to 28, and so, had you been, if we had to get to where you're at, that would have represented a 44 and 1/2 in percent from where you were to where you are.
Certainly, and, and no...
And those, it's the same, I took the same, it's apples to apples, where they were here, now they're here, they were here, now they're here, they were at Taco Bell, now they're Taco Bell, what's that number? And that's, it's out of, it's, it's out of line. And again, your industry is no more special. I'm sorry, and any attorneys that are listening, sorry, there's, you know, we're all, we all have, we all have, right, everybody's, so that, that's the issue I'm having.
Oh, and, and I appreciate that, Mr. Commissioner, and I, in looking at these numbers, I came to the same conclusion. But as was what Ms. Hockter's saying, and I tried to go ahead and put together a line graph to show where we were, you know, and how things had progressed and where we plateaued, I couldn't come up with a scale that would have been able to have all, all these different budgets together. And it comes down to this, yes, if you go from 2018 to 2023, what we're proposing, yes, it is that, that increase. But the amount that has been saved by the county, where our costs were plateaued for those four years, 2000, at 2016, sorry, 216,000 for 19, 20, 21, 22, you know, I can go back and run those numbers too. That's where we're now asking for, just starting at this point, where we could have been if we had been asking for those incremental increases that we did not ask for, that the county saved by not paying that. So, we're looking at a point where we would have been if we had been asking for those incremental increases that we forewent in the past two contracts.
Mr. Christopher?
No, I, Mr. Commissioner, I sort of pretty much did everything I had, and my math is kind of the same as your math, particularly squiggly.
Oh, yes. And again, not here to...
I already had the math, but your math confirmed my math.
Certainly.
I'm not worried about what you guys do, or how much you do, or the, you know, how much you're paid, your skilled professionals and skilled professionals deserve to be paid. It's that percent of gain, and if we can come to the same math we both have in there, I'll sign away.
And as Ms. Hockter said, we're willing to talk about that, but we want you to know, we feel that we're justified in asking for that at this point in time. And if I could, you talk about skilled professionals, but look at the Bill of Rights, find me another skilled professional where you are guaranteed the right to have that skilled professional at your side. The Sixth Amendment says you have the right to assistance of counsel when you are charged with a crime. It doesn't say the county has guaranteed the right to have a prosecutor or even a sheriff's office. This is a guarantee by the Constitution within the Sixth Amendment, and we're fulfilling that duty. And as we stated, this is not a job where anybody walking out of law school tomorrow can walk into and do. And it is, it is a difficult place to be, it's a difficult place to get to the point where you all are qualified, and Ms. Hockter pointed out some of the challenges. This is not something where, you know, I get a chuck on the shoulder every day, hey, you're doing a great job. It's not that way at all.
We might know a little something about that as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I, I can identify.
I think one of the issues we're facing, you may be having a meeting later today about, with comprehensive mental health and the issues that we're facing, because that has really changed the face of what we do. Not only are we dealing with criminals, but we are dealing with, in my practice, a change, you would find maybe two people that were found not competent to proceed. I am finding that over 50% of my people are having competent, not just competency issues, but Eastern is coming back and saying they are not competent. So, when those things happen, you have to stop everything, you have to get all of your evaluations, you have to get experts involved, and then we have a mental health system that has no placement for them. And so, we, I think that's really changed the face of our practice because we have a completely broken mental health system. And the state does not have beds for them, yet they're not competent, and we're dealing with those things that are an issue, and you're finding those challenges. I would hazard a guess that the Sheriff's Department has come and spoke to you about that, and the, the problems that they're facing in trying to house my incompetent clients that are having issues and trying to hurt themselves and things like that, as well as probably the Prosecutor's Office in trying to handle those cases and deal with them when we have people that are in crisis, and individuals that are at a level that are not going to be rehabilitated, and there's no placement for them. And it's, it's getting to be a little bit scary in our county.
And just, just a point of, of education, so we're not, you know, lawyers speaking to you. But when Ms. Hockter talks about competency, that means that a person has such a mental illness or mental defect that they cannot be prosecuted. But yet, they're still, they're having other crises. They, so, the prosecution is stayed, yet they remain in custody because there's no ability to take them to a state facility to go ahead and give them any treatment, to do any kind of restoration. So, we have this, this very toxic, unhealthy stasis of individuals who languish, whether it be in the jail, some of them out in the community, that are getting no services, and things just continue to carry on with the hope that they will, at some point, get some assistance. But yet, they continue to have problems, continue to generate calls, continue to have cases in other jurisdictions prosecuted against them, and we go through the same process there. So, yes, I would agree that the lack of effective mental health responses are borne out in what goes on in the courtroom and the jails.
If I may, Mr. Chair. What can you, because again, I'm a, I'm a numbers guy and a kind of facts as far as, I think you can understand, I mean, you, you've spoken to, you know, we get the copies of the reports that you file with the courts, as far as for the number of hours that you're proposing, you know, what you, what you've done. And you have both indicated that that is not really an accurate or a full assessment of your work. Unfortunately, that's what we have, and that's what the public sees as well. And so, we need some way that we have some kind of documentation, or some, some narrative or something that explains what the real picture is. Because, again, I don't think it's unreasonable for us, based on the information that we had, to, here's the, you know, Commissioner Anderson's correct, if you take this and divide it by that, it equals this. And that's the number that's kind of like, ooh, that's hard to explain, when I've got, you know, when we're trying to cut, you know, where we, you know, we've worked really hard to not have to cut staff, we don't have to reduce programs or anything, and we're tightening up everywhere we can. And all of those people are watching, and they, you know, when it's like, well, what about them? How, and as I said, we need information that justifies what that is. And right now, we don't really have it. We have, you know, and I'm not saying you're not being accurate, I'm saying, you know, the 12 people that are watching might hear it, but the 22,000 of them out in the public, there is, you know, extra scrutiny these days too, where there is, people want proof, they don't want, just because I say it, doesn't make it so.
At least in this avenue.
Yeah.
In other places, people can talk things into reality. In other places, people can talk things into reality.
Well, yeah, I've, yeah.
The current caseloads that we have, looking at what we're actually, because we also are bound by confidentiality, so a lot of it, we can, we can say, generalize what we're doing, but the case count that we have now, the juveniles that we have now, and the incompetent people that are incarcerated and people, the fact that every time a case goes to trial, just like in the prosecutor's office, we are still contacted and working on those appeal processes. So we're working with appellate, we're, we're working with the appellate council on those. We're preparing records, we're coming up with things. None of those are on the contracts because this contract idea was a new thing, and it's another cumbersome thing that we have to spend hours making sure that we're getting done as well, but none of that's on there because there's not a place for it. So all of the cases that we work with appellate, our attorneys, so every time our cases go to trial, and then they're brought up on appeal, and mostly every case that goes to trial is appealed, so then that appellate council, we're working with them, we're filing and perfecting the notice of appeal. We are working with appellate council with any issues that they need our assistance with. So every camp, every trial that goes, we're still on those, none of those show up. Any juveniles, some of the juveniles, we just had one that just came out of, she just turned twenty-one, so she's off the, the caseload. I've had her since I started this contract. So all of those young kids that are in there, those are juveniles that we're working with that don't come off, all of the truancies, all of the BECA, all of the offender stuff. Those kids stay with us for the entire term. So how many are there? We also have, again, the people that are mental illnesses that are in Eastern that have been either convicted or put absent conviction for prison, but they put in a mental health hospital, those are still our active clients, and we are dealing with them all the time. So it was Ms. Dugan's case, and then as soon as I came on the contract, it became mine. And it stays with me forever. So he calls me, this individual calls me, at least five hours a week I spend with him. He eats uptime all of the time because they have a right to appeal every week if they want. And we have to do that, we have to handle all of those. So there's all of these cases that don't have a place on that because the only time you see it is when it technically closes on their report. So all of the active.
And I don't want to create a, a cumbersome burden.
But that's where it's just trying to understand everyone at Eastern that we're dealing with.
I'm not the one that needs to understand.
You need to be able to communicate to the constituency. And I understand that, just off the top of my head, we're in, we're actually in the courtroom at least twice a month just for docking. I came here yesterday, I think I got here at.
Five times a month for me at least.
Right. And even more, well, I wasn't even thinking about the juveniles, but this is just it. It's then stopping and thinking, just, just on the criminal matters alone, that's twice a month, eight hours a day. For each hour I spend, there's probably two hours that I'm preparing, that's, you know, eight plus sixteen, that's twenty-four hours. Then for trials, it's nearly once a month, the same issue there. It could be eight to sixteen hours, but then the preparation before that. A mere seventy-two hours a month that I'm actually working these cases, that may not be reflected. And it's, as I always say, if attorneys weren't any good with numbers, we'd all be accountants and not attorneys. So also what you're seeing is probably a product of just bad accounting for our time, but that's seventy-two hours. So all of a sudden, Commissioner Anderson, your four hundred dollars an hour gets reduced to a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour if we're putting in a mere seventy-two hours a month, which I think is still under what we're actually doing if we had a timer by our, our, you know, hand and, oh, okay, I'm doing a Clickittack County Superior Court case, you know, on the clock now. So that maybe just to, to rough that in a bit, but if, if the board wishes to have a more realistic accounting, again, with the understanding, we are bound by, we can't necessarily put names to everything, but give you a better understanding of our time to justify that, that that's not over burdensome, that's not cumbersome.
I was going to say, having hired an attorney recently, they charge you for every minute.
Sure.
You know, that's, that's normal and.
But that's also a distinction between what my contracts professor used to call the plush carpet, you know, attorney down in, you know, Seattle or Portland. I don't work there for a reason because I don't want to be that person. This is a, this is more of a duty than a, than a job. It's more, and there's some days that I absolutely just say, you know, why am I doing this? And I just want to walk out of the office. But it's, it's due to the fact that I think I'm doing a service that is, is hard to come by other people who are going to do that. So yes, to make the distinction though, that is the, the civil attorney who has to go and grind out billable hours so he or she can make partner, all right? That's not a pressure that I have, but it's because I choose to do this job. So yes, there is a distinction there, probably in, in your area, yeah, you're going to get billed for every single staple through, you know, three pieces of paper. I get that, but that's, that's not how we operate.
We don't bill by the minute, but we get the calls, middle of the night, all weekends, and we take them and we deal with them. I do have new software, it's called Smokeball, but it does track those by the minute. And it is enlightening, I guess, to see because now I'm seeing thousands and thousands of dollars on each case because it does track every time I get on there, when we put those in, every time someone calls and those phone calls come in. And it tracks hourly like your civil firms do. Because with, it doesn't matter, we, it doesn't matter if I put in a hundred and forty hours on one case, it's the same. And when we go to felony trials, we are not billing by the hour, we put in as much time as we need to. And we might prepare for three trials to go, and we're putting in all of the time to do that. And then they may settle, one will go. But no, we don't track hourly. Now I'm starting to with my case software.
And probably, I should jump in on that.
And it's a little crazy because you look at it and it's insane.
Yeah, it's probably very enlightening.
I have a new legal assistant that started a while ago, and he always looks at those billings and it's mostly what we do is we go in, even in district court, and then I eliminate things. So the billing never reflects the time I actually spend. I take it off, I chop it down a little bit, because what we do is public defense attorneys. I think we look at that bill and we think, huh, they're indigent, we just chop it down a little bit. So overbilling is more a civil big firm thing, underbilling I think is a criminal defense thing, and it's just what we've always done here. So that's what we do.
Why do you guys not, why have you not put a CPI or some kind of adjustment in your contract that would last three, four years?
Did I say we were bad accountants? Yeah, and that's, you know, that, that is something that, that could be done, and maybe we do that in the future, but just based upon prior contracts, that just wasn't something that I think either Ms. Hockter or I really anticipated or even thought about doing. But, you know, we're certainly open to some kind of, you know, tie that to the Consumer Price Index.
Sure.
Well, that, that, I don't know, to me, that just makes sense because then you get your yearly bump. And, and not, I guess after we try to get so much at one time, try to take it to take five of the other.
But also, this being a fixed cost for the county, when we signed those two previous contracts, you knew, yeah, it was going to be two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars a year for the two of us. That was a known, it wasn't as if, okay, our, you know, is it going to go up, is it going to go down? That's a fixed, reliable cost. So there's, I think, some attractiveness for the county to know, okay, this is what it's going to be, no more, no less.
But I think going forward, I guess I would say, yes, I like that, but then if I'm sitting here when we do the next one, I want a CPI in the next one so that we keep you on the step.
Sure.
So we don't have a big number.
And I certainly appreciate that, yep.
Well, that is weird.
I guess my issue is, like Commissioner Soder said, it's hard to set a number. I mean, I know you have your fixed costs and cases and clients and trials, and it, it waves up and down. And I understand that, and I, I thank you, I'm not trying to be hard for your public service. I know how difficult it is dealing with the public people that you, you deal with on a daily basis. And many times, yeah, you just want to walk out and throw your hands up in the air and say, I'm done.
Right.
There's a lot of other things I could do that would make me a lot happier. For me, it's, it's making that case, you, I mean, because when you work in district court, you bill by the hour. So yet you do keep records of all that. I would expect that, you know, you would keep records of all of your cases, and it's good to hear that you are. It's hard to, you know, in order to set a standard, like my personal opinion was simply, you know, whether it's district court or whether it's superior court, my preference would be by the hour, this is what it costs, and you keep track of your hours, and it is what it is. That would be my preference. Would we spend potentially more? Yes. Would we spend potentially less? Possibly. Would it make, what does it do? It makes, it makes it really difficult for us to budget because I like the fixed number, but, you know, a contract that it's, it's this much an hour for your time. That would be my preference, that's not the preference of my seatmates. But the hard thing is, and, and I understand you can't give names, but what I need is is that overall accounting of how many hours did you actually put in doing the job, not just how many it closed, because that doesn't look good at all in the public eye. And if you guys can get that so that we can have that discussion and negotiation, if you have all that information, that would be great. If that's something we have to do in the future, that's what we have to do in the future. I've just never dealt with an attorney who doesn't have a really accurate accounting of all their time they spend.
We have case management software that can start tracking all of that. We haven't done that. If it came to an hourly, I think both of us would probably walk from the contract and say, we hope you find someone new. Because what you're not hearing in us, and I don't know if we're able to convey this to you, is by saying we are going to be available to pick up all of the juveniles, all of the mental health cases, all, and, and this is also reflecting the fact that there is a whole new area of law that we are now expected to take. Landlord tenant, there's a whole bunch of civil cases that fall under this contract as well. So not only are we doing what we've always been doing, but going into two thousand twenty-three, there's a whole other area that we're expected to pick up and handle as well as far as competencies, as far as representing those individuals. So when we say we have to shut down an area of our practice, it's like if you were a contractor, I don't know what profession you were in prior to becoming a commissioner, but you are shutting down all of those contracts or that work that you may have been taking in so that you are available to handle all of those cases. Now, in district court, it's very different because you just take what you can take. The district court cases are not weighted as heavily on the case weighting system. There's a whole bunch of factors that go into that so that you can always pick up a district court case, it's not that big of a deal. Felony cases are not the same. But what we didn't touch on, I think that is really important, is going into two thousand twenty-three, the burden on us as public defenders increases enormously. Because not only are we doing all the civil, the competencies, the juveniles, but now we are required to do civil representation of defendants as well, and that's part of the contract. And, and those cases, you're finding attorneys not taking landlord tenant cases and things like that. Because the people that are taking those, those cases are running into ten thousand, fifteen thousand dollar case, they're huge. Because the time, the energy, the expectations, the new statutes and laws regarding what you have to do to comply with, and the representation that has to be provided to the tenants is enormous. So there is a huge portion of law that we now have to practice as part of this contract that we didn't last year, that we didn't this year. So in two thousand twenty-three, we have to pick up those as well.
So if you'd like an estimate as to what we believe we will be doing in two thousand twenty-three, that, again, I think that's something that is reasonable, not overly cumbersome, and yes, we can go ahead and, and have that further discussion. But looking to the future, as Ms. Hockter said, our plate is going to get heavier, there's going to be more cost upon it, and that's, I think, should be reflected in the next contract.
One more thing that we need to talk about, and that is the changes in managing the public defenders. I know you're a public defender for Skamania County.
Yes.
How do they, how do they deal with it?
We, we, we have not come to any type of, of manner in which we're going to go about because the way I understand it, judge cannot be the one who assigns the cases. You know, am I qualified to, you know, say, okay, this one's for me, this one's for my partner in the contract? That is still something that we have not come to any kind of resolution on in Skamania County either. It is a, it's a total, you know, it's a function that it, we weren't quite sure why it all of a sudden got thrown, how did the, the judge's discussion, but from, you know, Wiserhead said, oh, it's got to be some third party doing that. But no, we have no resolution down there either.
Any thoughts on a good resolution? What would you prefer?
I.
I, and that, that's one of the many things that, that wakes me up at three o'clock in the morning, that doesn't have, doesn't have an answer right now.
I think one of the things with, when you look at who you're going to partner with and who you're going to do it, the burden on us as public defenders and the requirements that just seem to be added every single year by between the bar and the state, just keep piling and piling and piling. We saw Oregon, complete chaos, I don't know if you saw them, but their public defender system completely shut down. I mean, it completely imploded. And that, you have constitutional issues, you have tons of problems. The one thing going into this is I do it because Chris is my partner in this, and I know he's an attorney that's been practicing for many, many years, he has the experience, he's someone that I can trust to do this. And so when we do this contract, we talk amongst us and we say, okay, I'll take more of the juvenile cases, you take more of the sex, we're able to do that. And I think when we look at the cases on, he takes this, I take that, we understand each other when we say we have conflicts or we switch them back and forth, we're able to work very well together. Without that relationship, I think this contract would be impossible.
Is there, I mean, I'm a lawyer, is there anything in that new rule that the judge can't assign that says we can't put it in the contract that you guys, you sign for yourselves?
Certainly, that is, that is one of the different scenarios that is envisioned and is actually spoken to in the rule as far as it being one of the practicing attorneys. But somehow, all of a sudden, then, my, my concerns about ethical conflicts as far as, well, okay, let's say, I just don't want to, you know, take, yeah, yeah, I don't want to take this particular type of case, hey, you know, give them all the lawyer, right?
That's where you say you're dependent on the person, the two of us are good as a team. If you get without that, other people have said, well, just bring on somebody else, or why can't someone else think we need to do it? And, and people, the public have asked me about this, they've heard some of these hearings and they've talked about that. You had some hearings where they talked about you guys work fifteen minutes an hour and, and spend all this money. I'm like, that is not true. And so I say, I invite you to come into my office at any point in time. The phone rings off the hook, it's on weekends, it's on nights. And what we're doing, and when we talk about other attorneys, because they're not qualified. And so if we support that or do that, we, we jeopardize our license. With Chris, I don't have a problem doing that. If that's something that we, I mean, we could definitely put that into the contract and we can handle that amongst the two of us, I think we're very good at doing that. But it's, I think you guys are fortunate that you have both of us here with the experience that we have. Because it's a lot of years that got us to the point that we're at, we are actually qualified, we've done the trial work, not many attorneys are. And to be in a small town, to have us both locally situated where we can get to the jail, we can get to the courtroom, we can have the clients into our offices, and again, have that experience and are doing the work for the county, I think is an asset to our
Well, I hope I never meet your service if I was at this level.
That's the best way to do it. I, I, as I tell everybody, if, if, you know, the world be a better place and I'd have to go find a new job, no question about it. But from what my takeaway here, Mr. Commissioners, is you wish to have a more solid number-based justification for what we're asking for here, but also a potential resolution and solution to how cases are being assigned. So those are the two things that I hear you're asking us to give some more contemplation and work on to readdress with you at a future date. Am I missing anything else?
Other than appointing you guys, the only other option that I've come up with is, you know, having Yakima County's public defender program do the assigning of the cases for you, but then that's asking them and we'd be paying them.
Right.
And then you guys wouldn't be in control of your own destiny, and so that's why I wanted to bring this up and ask you because this is definitely something that needs to be in the contract.
I would certainly appreciate you bringing that to us rather than, oh, unilaterally done, now you guys deal with it. So thank you for that respect given to us.
And I would add, at least for myself, and I am really talk to the, it's like, I want absolute clarification that the judge. that the judge can't, or is it the preferred? Because I'm hearing conflicting things across the state that that's the preferred, but is it absolutely that they can't, are there circumstances? Because I'm thinking in our circumstance, maybe, you know, we are special and is, if it's not broke, why are we fixing it? And that's what I want to understand. And it could be, it's not that the courts or the legislature and you don't do things sometimes where it's like, why are you doing this? Doesn't mean they don't do it and we have to do it. I'm saying, I just want, I just want to be absolutely sure that we have to do what we're being told we think we have to do.
Certainly, we can, we can do more research on that in my brief discussions, both here and ClickItTap, but also Escamania County, Judge Grobe, my takeaway was, he cannot. So. But always looking for those may nots and shall nots.
And no disrespect to the judge, but the judge is the judge. I mean, that's.
And Mr. Commissioner, he's always right.
Yep. Across the street.
Right. I think he's in court. I don't think he can be listening right now, but.
So it's my recommendation. We sit down and go over the numbers we feel comfortable with and give them a counteroffer versus having them make up a new one.
I'm fine with that.
And are you familiar with the new case types that we are coming January 1st that we now are expected to do? Are, are you guys, do you guys know what those are?
Landlord tenant.
Or would you like us? Okay.
Yeah, landlord tenant, guardianships. Wasn't there not a third? If there was a third, it was something that was not all that. Those are the two.
The big ones.
Big ones. And there was, there was a third one. The number of calls that I take in a given week, especially in the past 18 months, even, even when there was a moratorium on there being any type of evictions, it has got to be one every other day, if not more.
Because it's a requirement. So anytime a person is being evicted, they're afforded the right to cancel. So they're assigned an attorney now under the new law, just like in a criminal case where you're assigned an attorney. So every time there's an eviction, they're coming.
The confusing part to me is why are they assigned an attorney of your stature and not just one of those district court?
They still have to be qualified, so they're coming. I think they put them under the fact that they want the qualifications.
And also because all landlord tenant disputes are only litigated in superior court as opposed to the district courts.
As a soon-to-be new landlord, I'm not one of those.
Don't, yep. Hire a management company, let them deal with it. That's the. Yes. All right. So do you still wish to go ahead and have us come up with a proposal as far as assigning attorneys to any given case, seeing how you're going to go ahead and counter with the, I guess, the, the actual compensation? But yes, we can go ahead and address the assignment issue.
All right. Anything? Couple weeks?
I think we can hammer it out either today or Thursday.
Right, but I want to give them time to work on. They get that done and.
We can get it to by the end of the week.
Okay. All right. We'll have something to you then by the end of the week.
All right. That'd be the 21st. Three weeks from today.
Or any other questions we can answer for you guys? Do you want our changes or?
No, I, I just want to say thank you guys for everything that you do for the people in the community. It's, it's a thankless job. And very rarely does anybody ever say thank you.
I appreciate that.
And thank you.
Have a great day.
Yeah, y'all do the same. Again, enjoy the, the summer-like weather before.
Yeah, we got two days left.
Two days left.
Stuck inside. Way too much to do.
Yeah.
Okay, next up, we have Public Works. Director Kelsey.
All right, thank you.
Step into the hot seat.
Right. Literally, huh? You got stuff to hand out to?
Yeah.
Maybe editors here.
Fifty fifty? Mm-hmm, fifty fifty.
Good morning. We got all kinds of stuff today.
Too much paper already here.
Yeah.
So we're just back to being a concept now?
No.
No?
He had a bunch of these laying around.
Like, start handing them out, hand them out.
It's always good to, to look at where you came from.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, those lights were in the original.
Somebody actually.
Somebody picked those.
Had someone that actually counted the windows and said, it's not the same.
Oh.
Have one less window now. I'm like, wow.
Somebody on staff, we were paying somebody to count the windows on them?
Somebody that notices that kind of stuff.
It was you, wasn't it? Jeff doesn't have the time. Whenever you're ready, sir.
All right. Let's see, just a couple of pay, pay estimates for approval today. And your agenda, one to Frank Gurney, Inc., and that's for the guardrail work. And that's in the amount of $67,942.81. And there's about $3,500 in retainage as well. Pay estimate, the final estimate for stripe right, and this is for our annual striping that we do every year. And the final check they'll receive today or after, when you sign it, is $64,789.05. And they have some retainage as well. Roosevelt grade paving, we did find some discrepancies going over the forensic report. And so we'll be working to, with the contractor to address those issues.
This is the quality of the.
Materials that were used are not what we specified.
Yes.
So.
And that's a reason for the degradation.
Yeah, and it has a, has a impact of reducing the life of the pavement.
Yes.
So that's a big deal.
Huge.
So for the whole grade or just like this little section of it?
Well, we tested the little section. That we're having problems with, so.
Right.
Spot checks another location, but we're hoping it's just down at the bottom where it sees most of the traffic.
Yeah.
On a daily basis.
So what is it, just their mix is wrong or?
Mix is wrong, yes. The oil is wrong.
So if they use the wrong oil potentially on the whole thing?
That's a possibility.
That's a possible.
Whole thing issue, and is that, is there a repair to that or is there a remove and replace to that?
Lots of options.
Lots of options.
We're not to that point. We just know it's defective and it doesn't meet the standard that we specified and paid for. So.
Are we going to test multiple spots?
We pulled the cores, but it, it, it was expensive to actually test for the, you know, the material itself. And so each core, so we focused on where we're seeing the, the issues, which is at the bottom. So, because we weren't sure, we needed to be sure what was wrong, what was going on. And so now we can go back and spot check the rest of the cores, because we did core all the way up the hill. So we have those samples. We just now would need to add that. But it's, it was kind of pricey to do this.
How much was the cost on that?
What's that?
How much was the cost on that? It was around 35?
Yeah, I think so, somewhere around that.
$35,000 to have a report and have somebody actually stand behind you. You lost 30, 50% of your life, because that's, that's big dollars. So you need somebody that's going to, so you need a, a good reputable expert that can stand behind you.
Can we charge them for that cost?
You would.
Yeah, nor, that'll be part of our next phase.
Negotiation of if we screwed up.
Yeah.
I mean, the reality is they should pay for us to document how they screwed up since they screwed up. Because if they hadn't, we would have aided, it would have been on us.
Yes.
Right.
But it confirmed a problem, then.
That we can already see.
Yeah.
See. So, wow. So would it be another 35,000 to get the other spot checks tested?
We had quite a few cores in the lower section. You know, we could, we'll have to pick the number of cores we want to have sampled and tested and, and then figure out a, a cost for that. But, you know, they've already done the analysis, written the report. It's just, is it more of the same?
Yeah.
That's really the question.
That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah. So that's, it won't be as much, I wouldn't think, but there'll be a cost. Yeah. And this, these are, you know, we use the, the landfill overweight, but these were also federal dollars.
Yeah.
So it's not just, it's somebody else's money that, that really prioritizes that they got what they paid for.
Yeah.
It's a big, it'll be a big deal.
Yes, so.
And I mean.
It's a big deal to us too.
Yeah, we'll have help.
From who, you know, whether we're paying it or somebody else is paying it, knowing how far it goes, that's a big deal in, in valuation and money too. So I mean, whether it's 35,000, might be 35,000, but it might save them hundreds of thousands.
Yeah.
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 Wouldn't you? I mean, and I'm speculating, if I was the supplier, I would want to figure something out. Because if I'm ever, because if I've, if I've supplied materials on a federally funded project and I get a black mark, I would imagine that I would be ineligible in the future, not just in this county, but anywhere, I would think.
And I don't, I don't know how they, it's, it's not a good thing, I know that.
No, it's.
But how it happened, I think, I don't think we've got to that point yet, you know?
Well, no, there'll be, you know, things roll downhill as far as somebody made a mistake.
Construction company that ordered wrong or the supplier that mixed wrong?
Correct. We don't know.
We don't know.
We just know it's not what we asked for.
Yeah, it could even be, you know, that the oil was not the, you know, that they specified the specific oil for the mix and who oversupplied the oil, said, oh, yeah, yeah, that's, this is this.
Yeah.
And then it wasn't. That's exactly what it is. And that's a serious no-no. You think? Yeah, I mean, and that's something you don't just casually make that mistake. Mistake, right. That's, yeah. There are certain oil specifications that are used on each side of the mound. And this doesn't match either of those. So are you keeping a not to, but make sure we're keeping the prosecutor in the loop? If once it gets to.
He knows we started down the process, but now we're, we have to have another discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's why I don't really want to.
Get too far into the weeds.
Never mind. Thank you. Moving on. Thanks, gentlemen.
You're welcome. Okay, Courtney Road, James Dean has exhausted his avenues for trying to find a paving contractor to pave it. It's not getting paved this year. Which is a bummer, because now it has to be maintained over the winter. And he, you know, he's got to keep doing that.
Yeah.
So. So we'll be sending out notices to the public and letting them know the road will open back up.
Special Roosevelt mix.
No? Yeah. So they'll have a great gravel road, have guardrail. Everything will be there but the hard surface. So.
Is this going to cost taxpayers more money next year? Or is it still going to be contracted if the amount is contracted?
Well, we're all hoping that the, the escalations that we've seen for hot mix and fuel, I mean, it's six months or eight months that that can.
That can change.
Change, hopefully in the better direction.
Yes.
I mean, that's the hope. Yes. Right now, we're at a high, so it's, you know.
But the, I mean, to pull that out a little further, I mean, we've always, like, there is a cost for holding the project over.
Right, but it was all.
Because we'll have to re, I mean, after the, at the end of the, you know, next spring, when it goes to get ready to get paved, there's going to be some work, you know, that they're going to have to get it shaped up and ready again before it's, it's. So I'm assuming we're going to, I guess that's the question, is that us or is that the contractor? Because it, was it, was it in the contract to get paid this year? And is the delay our fault? So whose fault is it?
Yes, go ahead.
It's up in the air because ultimately they have a certain amount of working days. And as long as they stay within that realm, I mean, you can allow, you know, it's always set up to winter over if need be. If need be. So we, you know, we, we'll work something out with them. I mean, it won't be, they know their idea was to, because we didn't really want to ground up, but it wouldn't have held up anyway to the truck traffic. So we ground it. So they ground it because we were getting complaints. It was dangerous and, you know, the asphalt was coming apart. Because that section of the road was bad. So ultimately, I mean, there'll be some cost to us, but we will keep it to a minimum because they have to maintain it. They know they're on the hook for that. So the cost should be minimum to us or will be minimum to us.
And what about at the lower section where they started paving? Did we grind, did that get ground up or is that whoop-de-whoop still in there?
It's still there.
It's still there.
Yeah.
And, I mean, do we have anything, a plan for that yet? Or do we have to wait until we find somebody who wants to pave it on what they want to do with it?
Once they find somebody, then they'll have to come up with a solution.
Yeah.
So for right now, it's the one section of the road that does have a hard surface.
The old section.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. As small as it is.
Yes.
Yeah. So. Just wanted to let you know before we send out letters.
Yeah.
On winter, on winter road.
Yeah. I mean, it, he, it's. It was his, his schedule, his subcontractor that wasn't able to perform, you know, that's, those kinds of things are the risks that he takes.
Yes. He's doing something that most contractors wouldn't do, so I give him a lot of credit. He's actually sending letters out explaining. Most contractors would say, they're your citizens, county. You deal with it.
Yeah.
So he's actually saying.
In this case, he is one of the citizens.
Yes. Yes. And he's giving his number out.
Yeah.
So I guess the other, the other question I have is, is do we still need to have it closed till the end? I mean.
We'll open it as soon as we're ready.
Right. Are we done hauling that rock up there?
We got another week.
Movement? Yeah, because it's going to start raining here.
Yeah.
Friday. Friday, yeah. And it's not going to start.
We have things to do on Friday.
Well, my phone, which it's like, I've only seen a sun thing for forever. Actually saw the first, ooh, look, it's raining.
And it looks like, ooh.
Yeah, now there's, yeah. So we'll try to get it open before November 15th, but November 15th, it'll be open by.
Okay. All right, moving on.
Okay. Design projects are all moving ahead for next year and the following years. Maintenance, our guys are still doing some work on a couple of the parking lots. And we're hoping, and on the weather, to get hot mixed the last day of this month. So.
By the way, I found it really impressive, the guy in the grader spinning circles in this little tiny lot over here. I thought that was remarkable that you get that big old machine running in little bitty circles.
It is. It'd be nice to have a small grader sometimes, smaller grader. So they're working on that and then they're doing grading and building shoulders on East Road up near Bickle, the town of Bickleton. Kind of getting ready for our paving project next year.
Did solar finish what they needed to do out there?
Yes, they, yeah, they did their work and I think now we're just trying to keep it maintained, which is still a challenge. Facility side, so anyway, so the building. So I brought this for it because Jeff, Jeff goes, here, have you seen this? Do you remember this? This is a brochure that we actually put together, I don't know, about three and a half years ago. And before we were finished with design, finished with our estimate. So in the, let's see, the estimate is, yeah, the, kind of the one, on one of the folds, it was 20 million. I think we, after that, we added all the rest of. after that, we added all the rest of the site work, um, which wasn't included, so it went up to twenty-two million dollars. And, you know, maybe the more, more, uh, impressive thing is on the back page, the timeline. So, you know, it, it's hard to keep projects on schedule of this magnitude. And there were a lot of moving pieces, you know, finding space for people, creating space for people that we were demolishing their buildings and space. And, uh, and then the building construction, moving people, um, disposing of all the old, uh, furniture and equipment that we had in the old buildings, demoing those buildings and creating the parking lots. And I think there'll just be a few small pieces of sidewalk and curb, uh, that will likely be next year. Um, as far as cost, we're pretty close. It's, we're really cutting it thin and it's likely that, uh, to actually finish those sidewalk pieces, um, we might need some more money. Um, and whether it's next year or the following year to do that, but that's, you know, measured in the point zero zero percent of overrun. It's, we've done really well. And so I just wanted to bring this up because I think, you know, my staff have done a fantastic job of doing all these pieces that we've, you know, from the facilities, buildings and grounds, the design group, the construction management group, and now our maintenance people that have done all these different pieces that really have helped save us money and keep us on schedule and under budget. So, um, I think they all did a fantastic job and I just wanted to say something.
That's good. I would just, given my construction background, they should. I mean, they deserve a huge, um, atta boy, or atta girl, or atta person, whatever the correct, I don't know. I'll go see Casey afterwards. For more trading. Uh, but I think one thing that's really impressive to me is when you look at it, which again, this brochure was done.
Twenty eighteen.
In twenty eighteen. And on this timeline, something happened in twenty nineteen, you know, this March of twenty twenty.
Right.
Screwed construction.
Just messed everything all up and yet we still, and, and, you know, inflated costs and supply chain issues where if you could pick a worse time to do a major capital project, we picked it. And it was just the luck of the draw where we were already going when it all kind of fell apart. And that we actually got out the other end and it's, and, you know, twenty twenty-two, project finished. It is basically finished, it's substantially finished. And it is twenty twenty-two. And that when you're talking about the budget, again, with all the, again, we set all that stuff starting in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And to come out the other end, I just can't, I don't know how we did it or you did it and folks did it, that we ended up with, you haven't been in here with supplementals, you know, a couple, three times, that we're gonna get out the end and maybe perhaps you'll need a few more dollars for some little pieces of sidewalk. That's extremely impressive and I would, I would ask anybody that's built anything beyond a chicken house in the last three or four years, if they could make the same claim. So, yeah. And that's, that didn't happen by accident. That was good management. You got good folks upstairs and I hope you'll keep good folks upstairs.
Yeah.
So, is the, you know, the, the work is not done as far as this project's done, but, you know, we have ongoing stuff that we will be working on.
Always.
Always, forever. So, thank you.
I got a question for you. You know, we decided to do this before the two of us were on here, so we didn't have a say to build this building. If you were to try to build this building right now, what do you think it would cost? How many miles?
I, you know, I think we've seen upward of forty percent increase.
That's what we've cast.
So, yeah, tack that on and.
Well theoretically, if it didn't get signed and approved to do by the previous board commissioners, it wouldn't get done by this board commissioner, forty percent.
It'd have been a lot more, yeah, huge, yeah.
Be huge.
Yeah, I think it would have been difficult to make the, like, justify, to make the numbers work with what we were gonna save or.
Yeah. It would be a difference in here.
It would be.
No, I, I gotta go with what Commissioner Soder said, you, you guys and your whole department up there deserve an atta boy and buy him a cake or something, some cupcakes.
I'll bring you a couple hams in December.
Okay, okay.
Has the oven even been turned on upstairs?
Yes.
Cause the dishwasher still had the stuffy, you know, the, welcome to, here's, here's your new dishwasher, so.
It's connected.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Blaming the oven, is that what you're doing?
No, I'm just saying, I've always had to bring a, a plug-in.
A warming?
A warming thing.
Moving on.
That we didn't know what the power in the jury room, it was always kinda questionable.
Or Jeff's gonna have to talk fast.
All right, we'll, uh, we'll move fast. I'll just move, most of the other things are, as they say, they are on the list and so I won't go into them. There are a couple, three follow-up issues, um, that I wanted to get into, so. Pam handed out a sheet. So we have, I don't know what's going on, three years now, we hired a contract carpenter to, uh, see if we could do our projects, uh, that are on our capital and non-capital list on the facility side and even road projects in a more economical way than hiring contractors. Cause we struggled to get people to bid on our jobs.
Yes.
And then when we did get bids, it was one contractor and it was whatever they bid.
Yeah.
And that was the only way to get work done. So we went back and looked at how much it would cost. We hired a carpenter and we've had them really working for us for, like I said, going on three years and, and our success and savings have been, um, large and that allows us to do more with, uh, people that we have. So this is the latest, or, so the latest project that we have had them working on, we just opened bids, which were higher for the parking lots. Um, the work that we're having our carpenters do, uh, was around a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars based on those bids. And this is, this is just typical of all the projects and estimates. We went over this during the budget, um, a few weeks ago. Um, but their estimate to do this and they're on schedule to complete it is, uh, forty-five thousand dollars with materials for the concrete work that they're, they're involved with. So big savings to the county. Um, Pam handed out, um, this sheet, so what we'd like to do is we'd like to make that permanent for the carpenter. We'd like to have them as, and as an employee, right now they, um, they make an hourly wage, they bring their own tools and use their own equipment and truck. Um, so we would like to have them as a permanent employee, um, and hire them on as a senior engineering tech, which if you read the, we work with HR and if you read their job description, it really kinda fits in. And before we had a carpenter, we would have our senior engineering techs do carpentry work for us in the off-season. So, so for them not to be contracted and pay for their mileage and vehicle, um, on a mile basis, um, the savings per hour, if you look on the sheet, is twelve dollars and ninety cents. Um, of course, cause we already have to pay some of the benefits, cause they've been here for a long time as a casual employee. So basically their annual savings, um, if we hired them on at that position, would be around thirty thousand dollars a year. Um, we'd also like to, um, our carpenter's helper, um, basically right now, uh, we have somebody that has a lot higher skills than a basic carpenter's helper. And we would like to hire them as a, uh, more of a facilities, a casual facilities and grounds person, so they're not a permanent employee. That would be, as we need somebody to do these projects, they're the helper, there's no work, there's no helper. Um, while the carpenter would continue on. And that would cost us a little more, about fifteen grand a year. So our net savings to do this is we'd save about fourteen thousand dollars a year to do this.
But then, now we're buying the tools and the truck and the.
Yeah, so there, there is a initial expense. We have quite a few tools at the, the shop at the fairgrounds. There would be more tools and we'd probably, um, take of another vehicle like we have done that's fully depreciated, um, out of the road, pass it down and set it up for this work, so it's.
Well, the argument I'd make is we're not actually hiring them, we're just converting them.
Yes.
Would be, I mean, there is a distinction there. I mean, it is.
Depending on who you're talking to.
Right, again.
And it's road funds, not general funds. There's a distinction there, but this wouldn't be, this would be general cause you're.
It's both.
They're building, it's all funds.
Facilities funds, would it all be general fund?
Well, it's both. They do road, they do facilities, they do special stuff up at Sadus Pass. The big thing for us, you know, we give them some sense of security because we all know how hard it is to find people, right? And somebody gets a hold of these guys and they hire them away from us, we can get them back at a hundred and eighty dollars an hour. It's probably what we would pay to have them back, to con, to contract back if we could find them at all. And then these little projects we have for all these, you know, I need something built or I need this, you know, we need this table adjusted. We don't have people to do that, so now we gotta try to find somebody to do it and you won't, it just won't get done.
What do our senior engineering techs do during the off-season now? They used to be carpenters during the off-season, what are they doing?
Well, some of them used to be carpenters, but when we, we went to the carpenter because they stay busy and they get no time off. So there are, are there aren't, are inspectors. So if we have a heavy construction year, for instance, the guy that's up at Courtney, now we're at, you know, he, they take a lot of time off because they have, you know, they get comp time and everything else. So they have a lot of time to spend in the winter time and they kinda understand that. And times have changed. Our, our inspectors are different than what they used to be. You know, years ago, people were like, okay, I wanna, I wanna work all this overtime, I'll make tons of money. Nowadays, people aren't like that. No offense to them, they wanna work forty hours. They'll do their time when they're inspecting, cause they know that. But they also want on the other end, time with their family. So they're not as available as they have been in the past.
How does our carpenter now get paid? Does he get, occasionally he gets paid from the road funds for a road job and he gets paid from facilities when he's doing a facility job? And you're just job costing his hours out?
Yes, his hours get charged against the projects that they're working on.
Yeah, his hours are all covered in the non-capital, the capital, uh, road and three oh seven, three oh six.
Where would they be in to this proposal?
Same thing. We're not asking him, they would still have projects. So all those projects that you see on the capital list, for instance, like replacing the roof at the beef barn, that would be these two guys.
So benefits for them are covered under road?
Yes.
So.
Road covers.
So that's part of this cost, um, to add benefits. That comes out of the road fund, doesn't go against the projects.
Can we do that if they're not work, I mean, it's not.
As long as we keep that amount of, um, unrestricted dollars in road, there, you know, there has to be that certain amount for us to do these other things like, like this or like the system administration or other things like that. So those unrestricted dollars allow us to be more flexible.
So, next question. Moving into the future, you know, we're, we're gonna be remodeling your guys' old building. We got the two offices over here. Now we have this building. Other than those big projects, Sadus Pass is gonna be done. Other than that, and the fairgrounds, what, I mean, is this, cause right now it's casual. If we don't have work for me, it doesn't work. Full-time is, are we gonna have, and does it show on your capital and non-capital enough time to take that into a full-time position? That's, that's kinda how you have to sell.
Um, for the next six years.
Next six years, yes.
After you approve the budget and, you know, I think we are in the same level of spending we currently are, yes. Yeah, those projects still need to get done and those are the guys that would do it. And then all the other things that come up throughout the year, um, that need to get done, these are the guys that do that.
Thoughts from my seatmates?
No, I mean, there's, to me, there's benefits, but there's also concerns and I think I need to chew on it.
Sir, I think they may have mentioned that the carpenter will now be a member of the union. All right.
Yeah.
The other one's not, but the, the helper's not gonna go in there.
Who's, whose idea was this? Was your, your guys' idea or the carpenter's idea?
It's our idea. He's actually taking a pay cut.
Yeah.
Cause we're paying him thirty-five dollars an hour now.
But he's also getting benefits.
Yes, so it's.
And he does get some benefits.
He gets some benefits now.
Yeah.
Not that, I mean, you want your bite torch, you kinda have tools, so there's something to that.
Um, I'm, I'm good with it. I think it's the, I think it makes fiscal sense. I have no concerns about looking, unless we are gonna drastically alter the, the six-year, the capital. There's plenty of work. It's not like you're gonna have to find something for him to do.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I don't have, I mean, and that could happen, as we always say, every year is a bu, I mean, every budget is a guess and there are no guarantees on anything.
Right.
Um, beyond, we don't know, you know, there's a reason that's a six-year plan and we, I would be willing to bet, whether it's road or our capital plan, we don't get everything done in six years. It's on that six, we end up, you know, when we go back and look at previous versions, we've made changes. Things rise or fall and stuff. And so I don't have any issue with, um, I think for planning purposes, we've got, we got plenty for them to do. If this is the most economical way to, um, the, those, those projects are on that list for a reason. These are not, oh, I'd like to have their, their, we're maintaining our facilities and unless we're gonna get rid of some facilities, I don't see that going away. So, yeah, I'm okay with that, with the understanding that if, you know, the, in the future, just like in any position, if things, circumstances change, there's no guarantees.
Well, but once it's part of the union.
No, there's, I mean, you, there's, you production in force, it's, it's happened. I've heard it's happened before.
There's a process.
If I'm being honest, I haven't actually eliminated, I don't think, I don't think we've ever cut pay, union positions since I've been here, so. But I know it is, it's possible it does happen.
Yes.
Again, so I guess the other question is, is this was your idea, this wasn't the carpenter's idea?
Correct.
Correct.
And it says here, the hourly rate with, with benefits is twelve dollars an hour less.
Yes.
Yes.
How does he feel about this?
He's okay with it because he's getting a little older and, you know, he need, wants the insurance package.
And the retirement.
And the retirement, yeah. That, that's a big plus. For him.
Oh, yeah, we already pay that.
We already pay that, so he gets the insurance package. The health, the dental.
So the hourly rate with benefits, that is not inclusive of the health, because that's coming out of the other, right?
That's inclusive of the health.
This would include the health?
That is including the health. But.
I, I have come to the conclusion that I don't like to make decisions immediately. I like to chew on things for a week because I think of.
That's fine.
Other issues two days later and then I'm like, whoops. And so I've made decisions here that two days later I've said, whoops, and wish I had a, went the other direction, so I would, I would rather chew on it for a week and give my answer next week.
I'm, I'm, I think that's fair, um, and we'll chew on this and, and I'm sure I'll come up with questions, but thank you for bringing it to us.
Be prepared, I might have a few questions next week, so.
Sure.
The three thousand dollars is the miles that we were paying for, I didn't write that down.
Okay.
I was wrong.
Okay, yeah.
It'll still cost us money. We still gotta pay for the fuel.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, follow up on the six year. We'll do it quickly. The highlights, I gave you a map on Sleepy Hollow Road because that was the newest, new road that we wanted. These are the traffic counts, as you can see in here. So you'll see, they were done in seventeen, so there really is not much increase in traffic.
Yeah.
And the, what everybody calls kind of the primitive piece is the one on mile post two two seven, which is the dirt section, which in twenty twenty, we had seven vehicles. So it is not.
This is daily.
This is daily, eighty-two.
In twenty.
No, no.
There were seven vehicles.
One, one snapshot.
I was one of those.
Yeah, there you go. So.
And that was at the time of the year when you could actually get through it.
Yes, yes, they, yeah, because we have to get back there. So, I mean, and I was again, a little bit, I lied, it wasn't, it's not a local road, it's actually collector. We changed the classification to allow for granting before Gordy and I got here, but then there was such an uproar from the community and two thousand five or six or whatever, I don't remember what year, they did not want it built. County went to the, to the task of going to get the, they changed the, the, uh, classification. They were gonna build this as a collector through, with using RAP dollars. And the, the local residents absolutely refused.
When was this, what year?
Twenty-five, oh six.
Five, oh six. It was like the Oak Ridge thing, but I heard even worse.
Because I have some recollection of there was, and again, that was right before my time, that the idea was, as the county looked at routes, the argument was, we have, we have a east-west route, you know, we have the, down on the river.
Yes.
And we have the northern, you know, Trout Lake to Glenwood to Gold, but the, the center, there's not, this would be the logical place where it was. And I think the county was pursuing that and then it was the Oak Ridge Road thing.
Yes.
You know, we don't want it improved, we like it primitive, don't do it. And so.
Right.
So you haven't heard from those people yet.
Yeah, you haven't heard. That's, that, that contingent is still out there.
Yeah.
So you haven't heard from, you've heard from the people that have now moved there and want it. And so I did also, real quick, did you ask, uh, we looked at fixing the ditch. And we can do that because we have materials in Lisle from our other project. So it's about a thirty thousand dollar cost. Now, I'm not, that wouldn't be a cost, that would be done by maintenance. We wouldn't be coming to you guys and saying we need thirty thousand dollars extra. I mean, thirteen thousand of that's labor, which we pay the guys, you know, anyway. So, I, I mean, it's something we could do if you want it done. But what that is, is it's jaw run, which is bigger rock capped with base course.
Oh, horse head minus with.
With base course over the top of it, yes.
Only in that.
Only in that three, it's about three hundred yards worth.
That's really bad, yeah.
Yeah, that's really bad where the road is, where it's basically the ditch. It would bring the road up to where it's not.
Above the water.
Yes.
Where's, where's that spot on the map?
I would guess it's just if I'm, I'd say it's on the, just east of this red dot. It'd be my guess, looking at this, so right about there. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, that's right.
Because I know I went down and turned around and came back. I had, because I thought about, do I really want to go back or do I want to go the other way? But I was heading to Golden Dale, so that was.
Gotta go.
You gotta go that way.
Yeah, I've, I've driven this way and I've driven that, just not.
Not that. Yeah.
Eventually turn around this way and I eventually.
Well, I didn't give up. I, I made it through.
Yeah, do it, if you're gonna do it, do it before Friday.
Yeah, don't do it on Friday. Yeah, that's, so that's, you know, we, again, we can do that if you want, we can, probably should, because it is.
How many houses live beyond that?
Uh, there's one.
That's the connection through.
Yeah.
Which all, again, only had seven daily trips.
Yeah, it doesn't, they don't get a lot of trips through there. Now, it sounds like because of the way the school buses run though, that people are moving across there now. Because that's what I heard from the people when they.
Yeah, it's funny that it's different where the, like, Apple, in Appleton, it's just so different that there are act, the districts are almost competing for, I mean, I don't know if they are, but it's like Click-a-Tat sends a bus up to pick up kids. Lisle in Appleton. And then there's also, there's, I mean, people are moving their kids all over the place now.
Yes.
A generation ago, you couldn't. I mean, it was, you went to the school that you lived in and.
Did apply for a transfer and.
It was a big deal and now it's, you can go wherever. And so I, there are, I, I know some folks that are doing that and they're over here and their kids are going to Click-a-Tat. Which, they're picking up the bus over there.
Hey, we just never got.
So the people who are commenting, one person lives out in hinterlands here.
Yes.
There were a bunch of people commenting though. Were, were they talking about?
The west end.
West, they're on the west end.
They're on the west end and so they're commenting from this area they want rock over here.
They want, because my understanding, and I don't know it as well as maybe even Dave does, Lisle School, some of them want to go to Lisle School District or Click-a-Tat. And the bus picks up somewhere on the east side of that, right?
So they're driving the whole thing in order to get the kids to school?
Yes, that's my understanding of what they said.
Yes. Some of them are going across, some of them are taking, are driving down Lisle Snowden down that way, which is not a bad.
No.
No, yeah.
No, that's.
But again, that used to be, like, that was like if you, well, I won't tell that story, but anyway, you wanted to scare somebody, you took them out there.
Yeah.
I'm fine with fixing the ditch, too much more than that. I think we.
Yeah.
Get into a whole other messes.
I mean, you're looking at just cost being cleared. It's thirty thousand dollars to fix the ditch for seven cars a day. And that's only during a portion of the year because you guys don't plow that in the winter time, do you?
Hmm, I think they probably eventually get over everything.
They eventually try to get over everything.
Yeah.
It, it takes a while.
They plow sleepy.
West Side plows everything.
Yeah. Eventually.
And what is its current designation?
Collector.
Because that's a legacy from when they applied for grants.
Right.
Tell it, fix the ditch even.
Which.
If it was primitive, then.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, no, I, I don't have a problem fixing the ditch either. I just thirty thousand dollars.
Beyond that, you're gonna have to.
Well, I agree. I, I, you know.
Okay.
But again, you guys are, you know.
We can carry some of this over if they want.
It is nasty, but it is a fire exit.
It is, yeah.
And the four, four by four club is gonna hate you for fixing the darn ditch.
They're gonna shut it out again.
They'll, yeah.
So if you want, we can hold the rest of this over till next.
Rest of the six year stuff till next week.
You want.
Or we can whip through it, it's up to you guys.
Uh, let's hold it over so Jeff has some time. He's been sitting back there. Well, my.
Well, he could answer some of the six year questions.
I'll get back to you.
That's right.
Whatever you need to do.
You guys good with holding it over or you want?
Doesn't matter to us, we do it either way.
Nothing's time sensitive that's left. Okay, let's talk about it next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, we're gonna get out of here and Jeff. There ain't a whole lot of pleasure up here.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen, and have a great day. Enjoy the weather, get outside.
All right.
Good morning. So you've got my written update from last Thursday. Uh, there are just a few changes, so I did not, uh, make extra copies unless you wanted, wanted them. I'll get right into it. Yeah, I'm happy to report that the, uh, Public Safety Radio System is once again performing and functioning normally at this time. Not to say that we haven't had issues in between my visits here in the last five weeks. Still looking into, um, Flat Top Security Fence and Shelter exterior. Trying to work with Mr. Hunter on how we can get that taken care of in a more cost effective way. If they can help or if we need to go outside to contract for both of those issues. Following up on all the other issues from the tier one and tier three preventative maintenance reports for this last year. There's a whole list of things that you can see that we've either completed, fixed, resolved in some way. Still looking into some anomalies that, um, troubleshooting with the link between Kazer site for the microwave. They're supposed to be investigating that last week. I haven't seen a report on their progress so far. The radio site agreement with Flat Top, with DNR for the Flat Top land lease is now fully executed. We received that back from the state late last week. And at that same time, I'm taking the opportunity to start the conversation with the folks that I negotiated the contract with and others for some sort of road access control. To potentially help with our fence damage and then also wildfire hazards related to trees and brush that are so close to the shelter and the tower at that site. For whatever reason, probably for a cost factor, that, uh, that, the clearing that was made for that site is right at the fence line, especially on the east side. So if we do have a forest fire in that area, um, we will lose that site, I have no doubt. It is a synthetic monopole at that location. So if those trees, it'll melt over like a candlestick. I am sure that the answer, I'll get back from the DNR is, um, if you go through all these processes, we can thin things out and give you more wildfire buffer because, you know, they know better than anybody what wildfire risks are and for a public safety radio site, that's not acceptable. And then, oh, by the way, you get to pay for it and, and pay us for the trees probably or some such thing, so. I will let you know how that goes. All other lease agreements, uh, work is still pending. The PUD, I think I mentioned it just in passing last time I was here, sometime in between, that the PUD is, is asked for further co-location at sites, um, which is in our contract with them. To allow that, but that is a pending request. Have not made a formal request yet. So that'll be a project in the future. Any questions on the radio system? Radio project next. Um, same status basically. Did see from the consultant the tower specifications and partial bid package like late on Friday. So still reviewing that, see where we go and, uh, working with Public Works and then our other vendor for, uh, for tier one maintenance, working with us for the public safety and commercial, uh, microwave system at that site. Nine one dispatch and Public Safety Radio, um, dispatching. The call volume reports weren't available. Phil is still covering shifts, so I try my very best on those days that he does get off not to hassle him for part of it, so he can get a full day off once in a while. The staff still remains critical. However, the good news is we have now, seeing the schedule and in the training program that one of our trainees should be released on October twenty-second, in the final stages of her training and, uh, shadow phase. And then our one, uh, current communications officer's returned from FMLA on October twenty-third.
You still have two, two others in training?
Yes, we do. So October twenty-second, twenty-third, then we bring two people back into the schedule full time as, uh, full partners, which will be a bit of a relief. And then we have another trainee, um, on track to come out sometime in the next two to three weeks and another trainee yet to be determined. We're continuing to advertise because no matter what happens, we'll still be down at least one or two full time positions. On the operations and training side, uh, Spillman CAD server updates, um, are now scheduled for November third. Based on Phil's schedule to project manage and facilitate that update. Or those updates, as you say. The nine one phone system with Z-tron was pending some updates and, um, we're waiting for Phil to have more time on that. And the text, the nine one project is still pending. Security audits with state access, um, is ongoing. And we're now working with county IT in a project for additional dispatch console monitors. As we talked about before, gentleman asked me months ago about how the security cameras in this facility, um, access was to that. And at that, well, to this date, we still have not gotten access to those in dispatch and to do so, we'll need more monitored capacity. That will also provide the capacity that we've needed, um, for quite some time now to monitor the school camera systems that we've been given access to as well as all the other data that we now watch on only three monitors.
So. Kind of carefully word this question. So right now currently, you can't monitor the cameras in this building or you have to switch to a separate thing if there's an issue to be able to monitor the cameras in this building?
We have no access. As far as I know, um, only IT or buildings or, uh, Public Works have access to this camera system. I know for a fact that myself and the sheriff's office have no access to this camera system. And that's pending. That was what you relayed to me, like I said, months ago, and I've been working with IT to get the additional monitors that we would need. Okay, be able to log into those and still do. That is correct, with our new IT manager, yes. We, we need to get those other three monitors in place and, and right now, this is only gonna be at two of the four stations until next year.
I'd say as long as it's something or at least, hey, I need to go look at that because of some kind of emergency situation, you have to have access. It's just, that's, that's an open.
Yep, we're, like I said, working with the new, uh, IT manager to get that access and what that has to be. The system is different than the courthouse security system that we have access to now. It's actually up on a big screen, a little smaller than this one. So that everybody in the dispatch center can watch it at the same time. What I have requested from IT, well, best case scenario would be our ability to switch between the courthouse and this facility on the big screen for a complete situational awareness, as well as to be able to log into it at each position on their own monitor, so they could have it right in their face, whoever was doing the tactical dispatching if there was an event at either one of these places.
They're all IP cameras, right?
That's correct.
So you just need the login credentials and information and you can log in.
I'm told it's not that simple, but yes.
Oh, it's not?
Because with the courthouse cameras and there's licensing, you know, how many people can be logged in or how many PCs basically and all those things, so. Counting on them.
Setting up what cameras visible where, just with knowledge of the jail, just going through this, is a giant cluster. So I'm assuming the same cluster is gonna happen there.
And it's a matter of, you know, finances that, like I said, how many, um, PCs can have access and so on and so forth. So we're trying to do that in the most efficient and cost effective way. But like I said, my, my request has been, give us the ability so that myself or anybody supervising during an event like that can see on the big screen. And then the, uh, the individual communications officer could also have it right in front of them and have a close up and we can be looking at different views. Because on the big screen, we keep as many cameras as we can fit on the. Because on the big screen, we keep as many cameras as we can fit on the screen at one time for the courthouse at this point, all on the screen, all the time. So those are up there to be watched. But when we need to watch cameras as somebody moves around the facility or inside the facility and you can select one camera at a time to see full screen, that's most effective if it's done at the workstation by the individual that needs that. So yeah, next year, the plan is, and right now we're getting the mounts for all four stations, but next year IT has it in their budget to get the additional three monitors for the two other stations. So all four by sometime at least by the middle of next year. New mental health crisis services that haven't been able to be in those meetings for a couple of weeks, but on our side of what's going on, all the reports I'm getting from the comms officers is that everything is working as it should, still going smoothly, much, much better than it ever did in the past. Especially in the last several years. So that is very encouraging. The users agreements have the two cities come up for renewal, Goldendale at the end of this year and then White Salmon in the end of February next year. I have already done my first review. Phil's done his as to any changes that we want to negotiate in those agreements. They've been longstanding, but at this point, we're finding that we are because of workload issues and staffing. We're finding it necessary not to just allow them and there's the language wasn't crafted tightly enough, in our opinion, in the past. Although there was an understanding that we wouldn't just take all of their office phone calls when they decide not to be in the office. They just forward everything to us, specifically Goldendale PD. So we take all of their administrative calls, not just calls for law enforcement, fire and EMS service. So we're going to tighten up that language and tell them that they have to have their own answering system, phone trees, whatever else it is, and then dispatch would be the last option in there that someone would have access to. Or it would simply start with, if you have an emergency, call nine one one. Otherwise, press this button for all these departments. And we don't deal with your admin calls. Only calls for service. After hours, holidays, when their staff are in meetings and so on. So right now, they just roll everything over to us. That's, that's not acceptable. So I'll be negotiating that. And anything else that the board wants to direct me to negotiate in those contracts? Next year's annual agreement for the city of Goldendale is at $42,000 and change. That increases every year by 3%. White Salmon will be paying next year $34,778 with the same annual increase. Any other questions? Not on your agenda is the fund 107 cash balance. No resolution to date. The finance committee meeting for Friday was canceled, as you probably know. At this point in time, we still have not received the reimbursement from state nine one one. So we're holding our breath. We're still holding the roughly $21,000 in AP that we've been holding for in excess of two months at this point. And also we are watching very closely because if and not to concern anyone, we will always pay our bills payroll included. But if the payroll coming up, but hits the account on the 25th, if we don't have that state reimbursement, then we'll be right on the bubble for the cash in that fund. And like I said, if it goes in the red, then the auditors will pay attention. At this point in time, we're estimating that there'll be somewhere plus or minus $2,000 if that AP goes through and the reimbursement hasn't come in.
Do we have any estimate on the reimbursement on when it's supposed to come out?
Any day, yeah. The state nine one one office can't tell us exactly. It has already been submitted by them to their finance and they're
Check is in the mail.
Putting it through the process. Thankfully, it's an electronic deposit, so as soon as it is made, then it is
Appears.
Valid, yes.
Appears here, but then the, he still needs to do something. The treasurer still needs to do something.
Right, transit account or?
Yes, we get notification that it's been deposited and, and everything I've been told now by the treasurer, the auditor and the finance manager is that once the state makes that electronic transfer, then that counts. No matter how long the treasurer takes to do that ascend transfer process. So that's the information I learned in the last two weeks. At least, you know, makes me feel better about getting a state audit finding based on maybe cash balance. That would be something that would not come to play there. Any other questions about nine one one dispatch? Emergency management program. You've got a long list of wildfires that, and no offense to anybody, but you know, don't rise or haven't risen to the level of a significant wildfire. So we're very fortunate in that. And we've had, I think for the whole season, I think 20 acres or so has been, you know, our high point. There was approximately 10 acres on highway 14 out of mile marker 106 back in late September. As we move through, most of these are under the five acre mark. Three since I submitted this report on the 14th. There was one at 990 Snowden Road. It was a vehicle fire that then spread to the trees and was contained within less than an acre, I believe. And another one on that same day at 54 Guy Crow Lane in Snowden area, which was a burn pile that got out of control. And, but however, did not spread very far. And then on the 15th, which was this last Saturday, highway 14, mile marker 150, Alderdale area, they had a fire along the railroad tracks between a 14 and maybe it's between the railroad tracks and the river, but it was about 100 foot stretch along the railroad tracks. Could have been started by a train or some grinding activity because they do rail grinding at this time of year extensively. So those are the three new ones that weren't on your list. The burn ban extensions went into place as well as zone three went, was established again. All the feedback that we've gotten has been positive. I've not gotten one negative comment. I've asked the comms officers. Sometimes people will call directly into dispatch and instead of calling our office numbers, I have not received one negative comment about reinstituting the zone three. There's been.
No, nothing, only positive.
I did get contacted, people asking, I know you re-instituted till the end of the month, but it looks like we're gonna start raining this weekend and keep raining or Friday, and it doesn't look like it's gonna stop. Where, you know, are you gonna keep the burn ban till the end of the month? Even though it's getting wet and potentially really wet? And then the other question is, I know Mount Adam Resource Stewards contacted me about potentially doing a controlled burn. You know, they do those all the time with Yakima Nation and DNR and I think the Forest Service. And, you know, the question was, is, you know, they want to do that right before it rains, get that controlled burn through there. Can they do that with the burn ban in place?
So Mount Adam Stewards would not have any standing, but the other agencies you listed, the National Scenic Area Fire, they do it on court. Every year on their own land, DNR and so on. So yes, prescribed burning can be conducted by those state and federal agencies. Yes.
But they have to do it on their property, correct? Because I think this is, this is, this is on Mars property down there by the somewhere down there.
That's, I've got no precedent for that, no. And those are all things that, you know, I intend to address with the burn ban code. Like you said, when can we release it? So on and so forth. What, you know, what time lags will it be? Because, I mean, you gentlemen can do anything by resolution and that's just a matter of getting on your agenda and, you know, having you vote on that and so on. I'll be proposing some other ways of instituting burn bans and releasing burn bans that don't have that extensive time lag between when everybody agrees that we've, it's time to institute it, right? In the beginning of the season and that we've got enough wetting rain because again, no offense to anyone, but the forecasters aren't that accurate. And right now, you know, 50% chance of rain, 80%, I think on Friday night is what the National Weather Service is saying. But they're still not saying how much to us. Degree of certainty.
Rain here and not raining two miles away.
Hours, yes. And so, yeah, it's, it's important when we're gonna do these things. If we're gonna do them when the conditions on the ground are right, instead of, you know, wait. I know if it starts raining this, this weekend, great. But to get a truly wetting rain, do we need to have two or three more rain events? And for that whole, the entire zone, like you say, the difference between Trout Lake and Bingen and so on. Becomes even more of a factor in zone two where you have the Simcoe's, Clickithead Valley, and then you have along the Columbia River. I mean, there's a 20 degree temperature difference between the Simcoe's and Maryhill. Most of the time, there's 10 degrees between my house, just outside Goldendale and, and Maryhill. They're always either warmer or colder than we are depending. And so we have to take all those things into consideration. And, yeah, I hope, I hope to make the new code more relevant to all of those things. And I know that in zone three, I didn't list them here because they weren't out of control, but we have had people doing fire pits, campfires, recreational burning, as it's some organizations are now calling it and making that distinction between a recreational burn. So fire pit in your backyard or campground fire versus slash pile or yard debris pile, whatever that terminology becomes. If we can make those distinctions, you know, maybe we have different levels of burn bans. Because I think, and what I tried to do when I first put forth the zone system was make it actually relevant and meaningful for our citizens. Because the frustration of the burn ban goes on too late. It's already unsafe to burn and the people that don't realize that, you know, can cause serious damage. And then just waiting until, you know, the snow is almost flying or an arbitrary date that it ends and it's still not appropriate to burn. I would love it if we didn't have to have a burn ban at all, if everybody was just how do I put this? Aware enough and educated enough about the circumstances to not burn when it wasn't safe to burn. Unfortunately, we can't count on that. So but those are my thoughts on those that I answered all those questions. Things for me to work on in the next few months and I will get you a burn ban code draft. I want to put that together for myself and make first round out to the fire chiefs. And then bring it back to you to see what your input is after the fire chiefs have had their first look at it. I'm sure at the fire chiefs level, there will be plenty of debate. But at a certain point, we're gonna have to decide what's right for the county and not each of the 15 fire districts. Training and exercises under the emergency management program, you can see those listed there. There's no changes. I will note that at the SUAS kickoff meeting in training, we had 11 people in attendance. We have, I believe, 18 people total signed up as being interested in that team. And we're working to schedule the first round of training next month, provided by the vendor. So we can get that program off the ground and get some qualified pilots available for callouts. We've had a few instances just in the last couple of weeks. Apologize, radio system alarm is going off. The one thing that can get through even my silence mode. So that it would have been a good thing to have a UAV on a few incidents that we had in the last three months. So I'm already looking forward to the positive impact that can have and getting the buy-in from firefighters. I have several firefighters that want to be on the team as well as search and rescue members. You can see listed next is the EM program grants and questions on those. It's extensive. I won't go into all that if you don't need me to. Still moving forward on the public outreach and education with the disaster preparedness pamphlets. They're going out this week and next week. That grant that we funded all that under expires the end of this month, so everybody should have them in their mailbox. They're going out to all postal patrons in the county. And we are working diligently to keep our website and our social media updated with not only emergency messages, but also seasonal messages for preparedness and things for the public to think about. And then on the binging point, still waiting for BNSF to reply to that white paper that was submitted. Anything else?
Good.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Anything you gentlemen have for the good of the order before we head to lunch?
Thank you, Director King. Have a great day. All right. If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to recess the public meeting for the morning and be back at 1:00.
I would take a motion.
Motion in a second to recess. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you all. We'll see you all soon. Good afternoon. We are going to call the regular business meeting of the Clickithead County Board of County Commissioners to order. Let the record show all three commissioners are present. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the business agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion in a second to approve the business agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the commissioner meeting minutes for September 27th, 2022 and October 11th, 2022 as presented.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion in a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, we will move into citizen comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. As, as always, after everyone has had a chance to speak, the commissioners will respond if they so choose. We begin as always in the room. If there's anyone.
Are those lights green, ma'am?
Yep.
Perfect.
Candy Magnuson, I'm gonna ask all three of you if you've ever read a solar lease that these people have to sign. That's my question to all three of you. That the people that are signing of the solar companies, if you've ever read.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Magnuson. Next, we will go online, is there anybody who'd like to provide public comment? Star six, raise your hand, uh, turn your video on, unmute yourself. Okay. Well, when you change your mind, let us know.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
You may.
Quick answer to your question, I do have a copy of InverEnergy's solar lease proposal from September twentieth of twenty-eighteen that was provided to us a year or so back from Cease, but it is just a proposal, not the actual legal contract. No, I have not read an actual legal contract.
If you guys want a copy, I got one.
I would, I would be curious.
Okay. Twenty-six pages.
And I would imagine each one is potentially different if each landowner wanted a different add-on in there.
You know, it's pretty standard, I think.
Right, I figure it's probably a-
Well-covered.
It's, right, it's twenty-six pages of well-covered and then if the landowners like, has a specific, they might add it in.
The only thing I'd worry is I always understood that most of those leases between landowners are very hush, husk and secret and they sign non-disclosures. And so the thing I would worry about is if you handed it to the commissioners, it would become a public document. But it could get the landowner into hot water legally. So that's the only thing I would, I would be concerned with.
I got it from the landowner, did not sign.
Oh, so it, it was a proposal, like this?
Well, it was, yes, but this is just a one-page, hey, we're interested in your land, do you have any interest?
Oh.
She's got the twenty-six page, the landowner was interested, the landowner just backed out at the last minute and didn't sign.
Got it. Well, then I don't know.
I took an inch off.
Yeah, I, I, I would, uh, encourage you to check with the landowner that you got it from and make sure they're okay with it coming up here.
They are, they are.
Like I say, I'd be interested, I just don't wanna get anybody in trouble, you know, so.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment, online or in the room?
Susan has her hand up.
It's like, oh.
It looks like her hand's in her bag, bye.
Let's just quiet, we need some public comment, so, you know.
Start calling on people.
Just start pointing them out.
That's one way to drive us away.
Well, I apologize, but it's all in good fun.
It is.
Is there anyone who would like to provide public comment? Star six, unmute yourself. Jerry, are you there? Always feared this day when we wouldn't have a full twenty-five minutes.
Had a few of these.
Have we? Go far in between.
Actually, I do have a question.
Well, come on forward.
Not, not formally, but informally, how's that? So it's like a disclaimer to... I just heard some, oh, this is Susan from Goldendale. And, um, I just heard, it sounds like a rumor, but I, I know within your budget process, it seems like you're working on mental health, getting a mental health department, um, budgeted, is that correct? Okay, so, um, someone told me that it should be operational by November, that's my question.
There was a question? It will it, will it be operational?
By November.
Maybe if we have time, a little update for, for, I mean, nobody's screaming that they want time, so if you wanna give her a four-minute update on what we got going on.
Caveatting operational, what the definition of operational is.
Right.
What's that? Oh, yeah, define operation.
Yes.
Now, you're just asking me for-
We, uh, we are still, have one thing left and that's waiting for the state, uh, to authorize us as a behavioral health agency. And so our goal is just to be operational in November. Um, we've currently advertised for the designated crisis responder positions. We actually have multiple applicants, which is hurrah. We have not advertised for, I'm looking to Rob, the, um, SUD, the substance use position, have we?
I don't think so.
We haven't advertised, but we've, we've got the job descriptions and everything together. And so the idea is, is that we will continue using Crisis Connections Lifeline?
Lifeline.
Lifeline, um, for the first triage, like when you call, the first person you talk to, until the end of the year and while we build up the program. And then by the end of the year, then they should likely roll out and then we'll have full-time staff that, um, can take those crisis phone calls and then also provide the, um, designated crisis responder services. So, I may, it's absolutely amazing, the staff, um, our department heads, our elected heads, I mean, it's like building a business, a brand-new business, and doing that in the government, um, sector is really difficult. And everyone came together and has done an amazing, amazing job.
So, and for, uh, a piece of history for that, the reason we are doing that is because comprehensive mental health used to have crisis responders in our county and they have so chosen not to do so anymore. That is comprehensive, the state money would give, the state would give money to Beacon Health, Beacon would give it to Comprehensive Mental Health, who's their own nonprofit type of thing. So, when they decided they weren't gonna do it anymore, we have nobody that's, can answer a phone call, or help law enforcement, or jails, or hospitals, or anybody else. So with the absence of any private, um, company willing to step forward, we decided it would behoove us to do it on a county level. Uh, currently, all funding for this project is coming, again, through state funds, through Beacon, and then to us. So there are no county dollars, uh, in this program, so far.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Raise your hand, unmute your phone, star six, turn your video on.
Just the microphones must be hooked to the light, because they're doing it all the time, too, so maybe that might be going up.
The light goes out?
Well, we sit in here and the lights go out on it.
Oh, the, yeah, they turn off.
Reading contract earlier and she's like, you need to turn the lights on, I'm like, no, I'm fine, I'm like, wait a minute, no. So I started squeaking to try to read and, so then we had a discussion about the lights automatically turning off and on.
Darn smart buildings that are too smart. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Come forward.
All right, and I'm here for me, myself and I, I'm not speaking for anyone else. I have battled myself for weeks, but decided I needed to step up and speak my mind. I am here as a fourth-generation citizen of Clickitack County, and a twenty-year employee of the county. I have listened most Tuesdays recently with dismay, answered numerous time-consuming phone calls and emails. We've been ridiculed, yelled at, and treated in such a manner that it's evident there is no such thing as common courtesy any longer, especially if you are a county employee. Out of my twenty years here, the last few have by far been the most brutal, but not at the hands of my employer. It feels like we can't win, but we're guaranteed to lose every time. Why? Because we have a different point of view or cannot enforce something that hasn't been adopted? Or is it because we're convenient to take the brunt of things we cannot control? We listen to how corrupt we are, we're accused of multiple offenses, and that we don't care. A job I have truly enjoyed and am passionate about has become borderline unbearable more often than not. It's difficult to want to come to work every day, wondering how much abuse the day will bring. If we spoke to members of the public in the same manner they repeatedly speak to all of us, the public would be incensed and all of us would be fired. Yet I and the rest of the employees that I work with are expected to take it, maintain our politeness, and smile. By speaking today, I don't expect much to change. But I am hopeful that perhaps certain members of the public will pause just for a minute and think before speaking. Would you like to be talked to like that? Would you want to be treated the same way you are treating others? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Almost deserves a standing ovation, thank you.
You crying?
Almost made my second mistake, sir.
Well, don't cry, I'm not gonna make me cry. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Watch out for waterworks over here.
So I did take my break, just come down here, some nine o'clock, because I'm speaking personally, not from, I'm doing my best not to say anything from work standpoint. I would like the general public out there hearing what feels like constant harassment coming in daily on our emails. Personally, I cannot speak for anyone else. No matter what we say, no matter what we provide, it's never good enough, it leads to another, document that we have to provide again. It's, it's keeping me from being my fullest potential at my job. It is keeping multiple people from being able to be themselves, to relax, to embrace their job. And no matter what we say, no matter what they do, they keep saying, we want you to hear us, but they refuse to hear us. And I think it's time that the public, I've been listening to this, listening to the board meetings, seeing the way that things come in, the way they go out. We try to be as respectful as we can as a person, I cannot speak for anyone else. It is taxing, your moms, your fathers, your family members, we are community members. We have long-lasting families in this place, that, in this county. In the county that our ancestors continued to grow, that brought new people in because they enjoyed it. It's all our families. We are people, we are human. To hear things getting bashed, to continually break us down, to keep us from being able to give our full, for me, to give my full potential to my job at my desk, it's hard. And I think the public needs to hear that I have a cruel, cruel relationship with some of them that are, um, knowledge seekers in their own way. But I don't feel like that they have the same respect for me if they wanna look at constant emails as being my job security. My job security is doing the best I can for the other ninety-nine percent of the public and giving them the best of me. And so, I, I, it's, uh, I'm doing, I can't speak just for me. But I think the rest of the public out there that's listening need to hear that it is taking a toll. You wanna worry about budgets and about our healthcare, what does healthcare do when people are getting mentally and physically broke down? You're gonna miss valuable employees, you're gonna have higher insurance costs, you're gonna have a lot of things going on, you're gonna... So, if the public really wants to have high-quality employees, they're gonna do their best for them, let's protect them and stick to the things that matter. Sorry, thank you.
I'm gonna go clock back in, so let me go.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to provide public comment? In the room or online? Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Last chance. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Zero zero eight eight.
Yes, uh, Delmar Eldred, Goldendale. And, you know, the thing is, is that, uh, do you commissioners actually believe that the best thing for Clickitack County is to be covered with thousands of acres of black glass? And that, uh, the, everywhere that these companies have gone, where they have marketed that there's gonna be a big tax increase, has not become a reality. And, but I mean, I don't know, you know, because, uh, well, especially Christopher's condescending, down-talking everybody, and rather than really look at, uh, verifiable , uh, comments and stuff that people have had, that have had to deal with these large solar, uh, complex, complexes coming into their area and then not living up to the standards. And I mean, the lawsuits that against Avangrad, Nextra, uh, Arbola and all that, uh, you know, you can ignore those if you want, but the thing is, is that you have to ask yourself, are, am I really doing the best thing for Clickitack County by not, uh, putting in restriction and ordinances on the type of development that is beneficial and saves the integrity of the county? Or am I just doing it to help, um, these big investors out? Because that's exactly what it looks like. And, you know, it, it gives all the appearance that there has to be a benefit that you guys must be, uh, consuming because there is no real reason why you're not more active in trying to protect this county and make it more, uh, you know, economically benefit than what, uh, the little bit that we're gonna get out of these, uh, renewable energy sites over. If we, if we gotta expand, if we gotta have development, let's have the right kind of development that improves the county, not ones that degrade the county. And I just think that you guys are either, um, lazy or, you know, you have another reason for not participating and taking, uh, an interest in improving the county rather than destroying acres and acres and acres of property here. But anyway, that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Eldred. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? This is your last chance. I know we had somebody new show up, so. I know we had somebody new show up, so. Okay. Would either of my seatmates like to respond to any of the comment?
I can go or you can go. Yes, I will. First off, Mrs. Magnuson, no, I have not actually seen a, and I would be interested in seeing one just for my own edification, I guess. No, no, I'm not, I'm not going to. But if you give it to me, it is a public record. Yeah, that's... Ms. Ward. You vocalized much, if not all, of, I think, lots of people's feelings, both that are employees, that are elected officials, that there is... There has been a change in the culture, apparently, where the way that people are, feel entitled to conduct business has fundamentally changed. And our system is built on kind of the old ways of doing things. That we tell our employees, we were all taught that when somebody comes in the door, we do everything we possibly, you know, we're polite. We hold ourselves to a higher standard, even though it's, you know, we are taking abuse. Unfortunately, I think we're going to have to adapt our responses to, and I think that is kind of what I'm hearing. It's unfortunate, because for the 99.99% of the population out there, they're the ones that are going to suffer from it. They're going to be, in essence, punished for the bad behavior of a few bad actors. And it is, but we have to find a way. Our system's broken. It's not working the way it is, and it is impacting our ability to be able to serve everybody, as Rebecca said. That's our job, and we're not able to do it. I can only speak for myself as far as my effectiveness and my ability, my energy, my... Has been severely impacted because it's being consumed by four or five people. And I have 22,000 other people that I work for. And so I completely hear you. You're saying all the things I'm thinking as well. And the same to Rebecca. Mr. Eldred, yes, do I think what we're doing is in the best interest of the citizens of Clickittack County? Yes. Otherwise, I wouldn't be doing it. It seems inconceivable to you that it's possible that we just have a difference of opinion, that our motives are not, that we're either lazy, which is a direct quote, or incompetent, or that we are corrupt, or that we are getting some benefit. We've repeatedly said that is not true, at least to my, I only speak to myself, but I don't see any evidence of it anywhere else. It's just possible that we are doing what we think is best. Nobody says you have to agree with that, but you don't have to attack us that it is, that we're somehow lazy or corrupt. We are doing our job. I have 16 years of experience of doing my job, and I think the track record is I have, I've been fairly successful at looking after the interests of the citizens of Clickittack County. That doesn't mean you have to agree with me, but it's, don't disrespect me by look for other motives. There is no other motive. I am doing, in the whole, based on all the information that I have, I am doing what I think is best, and time will tell whether I'm right or wrong. And that will happen, and it's... And I would just ask the listeners to just consider that some of the information that you are using to base your decisions on is not either factually correct or is incomplete. I am going through the same thing myself. I always ask myself that. It's like, what if I'm wrong? What if I think I know, but sometimes there is other information out there? And I do ask myself, I just ask for the same consideration from listeners, that it might be possible that maybe you don't have all the information.
Thank you, Commissioner Soder. Commissioner Christopher.
Okay. To our staff that was brave enough to come forward and speak their mind, I appreciate you doing that. I'm sorry you have to take the abuse that you have to take on a regular basis from a few bullies. And yeah, I will call them bullies. It's kind of weird. In high school, you were always trained to stand up to bullies. And then you come here, and God forbid, you stand up to a bully, because you're an elected official and you're held to a higher account. So they can come in and bully on a daily basis in ridicule and shame, and that's okay for them, unfortunately. And yet I can't even other than apologizing to my employees for the daily insults they have to take. There's not much more I can do, because you know what? I do believe in the Constitution, and bullies do have a right to the First Amendment to speak their mind, even if they're ignorant. There's a lot of ignorance out there, and I don't personally want to associate with the ignorance. When it comes to the actual issues that, let's say, CESE has, I agree with them, unlike my seatmates, on a lot of their issues. I just refuse to associate with them because they are bullies. They attack people. They attack our staff that did not run for public office to get abused on a daily basis. They're trying to do their jobs to the best of their ability. And the fact that you want to, I've read the emails. They all get forwarded to us daily, constant battery, and mental abuse that gets sent to these people is, I don't know. The bully should be ashamed of themselves, and I'm going to end my comments right there before I get into more trouble.
Thank you, Commissioner. We live in paradise in this county. This is a beautiful place, that we've raised our families here. We were raised here, many of us. The people that move here move here because it's a beautiful place. I want to say thank you, Director Ward, and thank you, Heather, for saying and having the strength to come up and say it. You don't deserve to be treated like that. You don't deserve to have people be rude to you. You don't deserve to have to take it. And we three, I think, need to look at that, like Commissioner Soder said, and find new ways of doing things and responding to things. And I have no problem if somebody is being completely rude and disrespectful. If you forward that to one of us and let one of the three of us deal with that. We are the public face, and at some point, I don't want to lose good employees because of a few bad apples. I don't want to lose the culture, like Commissioner Soder said, that we have always had, that, you know, we come here, we have a smile on our face, we are helpful, we try to help. Our whole job as public servants is safety and the security of the people. And that's what you do in building, that's what you do in planning, that's what you do in all these different departments. We see it. We feel it. I know what it feels like to have people just attacking you constantly. I mean, when you're constantly told that you're neglectful of the citizens, that you push a private agenda, that you fail to do your duty, your job, that people question your ability, your education, all your background. The demeaning nature, it affects your ability to do your job, and we're here to do a job. And I am so very sorry that people treat you like this. I am so very sorry that people think, or people feel that they can do that and that they should be allowed to get away with it. I think this is a bigger problem all throughout our country. I think this has become an issue where respect and decency and honestly, the opportunity to have disagreements and rational, logical disagreements isn't okay anymore. It's my way or the highway, and that's the only way it'll ever be. And if you disagree with me, well, not only am I going to yell at you, scream at you, I'm going to come after you. I'm going to come after your family. I'm going to talk bad about you. I'm going to go after your businesses. This is what we're experiencing in this county, and it's absolutely disgraceful. And I'll do everything I can to protect you from this so that it stops. And at some point, it is harassment, and I'm so sorry. I wish I had a silver bullet to fix the problem. But it's, and, you know, not all, not the job. The job should be fun and enjoyable, and the camaraderie that we have in this building and between our employees and our workers. It really brightens my day to see us all working together. And the fact that both of you came down and are honest about it. I know everybody else is feeling it. People feel it in all the different departments. And for all those that didn't speak up, thank you for what you do for this county. Thank you for coming to work every day with a smile on your face and always putting in the time and effort. Don't let a few negative Nancys out there bring you down and affect your health, because your health matters and your work matters. So, thank you. With that, I think we're going to close public comment and move into our public hearings, public meetings, and bid openings. And getting back to mental health, we have a proposal for the electronic healthcare record system for Clickittack County Crisis and Behavioral Health Services, which means we should be opening. Well, shoot.
Inadvertently goes somewhere else.
Well, that's not good for our mental health program.
Another problem to solve.
Well, I know we had one interested party that asked if they could turn it in a day late, so at least we have some interest out there. And now we'll have to get back to it. That's not fun. All right. Moving on, we have a public meeting to consider the approval of Boundary Line Adjustment BLA 2022-08.
So we have applicant Gerald Dean and LJ Dean Enterprises LLC. Boundary Line Adjustment BLA 2022-08 is a proposal to adjust the common property line between parcels 0212106200100 and 0612100002400 off of Mount Adams Highway. The proposed property Boundary Line Adjustment is located within the portion of Section 10, Township 6 North, Range 12 East, Willamette Meridian, Clickittack County, Washington, in the Glenwood vicinity. The administrative review of this Boundary Line Adjustment has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from Road, Health, the Treasures, and Planning Departments. All conditions attached to the preliminary approval have been met. If the Board finds that it is in the public's interest to approve this Boundary Line Adjustment, a motion will be needed to grant final approval of BLA 2022-08.
Any questions? Pretty simple.
Move the lines around.
Yep. Explain to me.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve Boundary Line Adjustment BLA 22-08 and grant final approval. Applicant is Gerald Dina and LJ Dean Enterprises LLC.
I would second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve the Boundary Line Adjustment BLA 2022-08. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Oh, do I get to keep it?
Oh. We're on the take.
Too soon?
Too soon. That's always going to be too soon.
I got a free pen as part of my job.
No, the pen stays with, yeah, mine.
You don't give a ticket.
When I leave, they will still be here.
That is a fabulous pen, by the way.
Yes. No, uh, I don't know. It might have been a gift to the seat.
You will enjoy your pen, too.
I do enjoy my pen. I'm, I got to find out what these are.
This you'll like. You got to try it with the new one.
We'll see. We'll see. I'll be the judge.
It will bring joy to your day, sir.
Ooh, I do like it. That is perfect. Oh, yes. Well, she is now. We're easily...
That was an easy starting buy-off.
Well, yes, I am aware.
Yes, I was aware. Welcome to the family, and I'm sorry.
Well, unfortunately, it's not like that was your first day on the job, but you made us all happy, so now you have to do that every single day.
Yeah.
Fancy pen, huh?
Yeah.
He's regretting leaving now. He's going to try to take his pen with him.
Okay.
Pay estimates or anything?
Please. No, let's go on with the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda with eight items.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with all eight items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we pay pay estimate number one and final to Frank Gurney Incorporated in the amount of $71,518.75, which contains retainage in the amount of $3,575.94 for the total payment amount of $97,942.81. That math doesn't work. Sorry, gentlemen.
Yeah, that didn't work. No, it doesn't.
I'm doing math in my head while I'm reading that, going, "That math does not work." So I will pull my motion until we figure it out.
Okay. Yeah.
Want me to do the next one?
Where's the... The actual one is here.
There we go. Here we go. That's a guardrail. Yeah.
Should have guardrail. This is the one for guardrail.
Yep, here you go.
Seventy-one, seventy-one. Thirty-five is good, so it's just the total. Do the contractor. All right, I'll try that again. Mr. Chairman, I move that we pay pay estimate number one and final to Frank Gurney Incorporated in the amount of $71,518.75, which contains retainage in the amount of $3,575.94 for the total payment amount of $67,942.81 for the small works contract 2022 guardrail repairs.
I will second that motion.
A motion and a second to pay pay estimate number one and final to Frank Gurney Incorporated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pay pay estimate to pay us, final pay estimate to Stripe Rate Incorporated in the amount of $68,199.0, which contains retainage in the amount of $3,499.94. which contains retainage in the amount of three thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and ninety-five cents for the total payment amount of sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and five cents for the 2022 annual striping program and RN 642-2022.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to pay the final pay estimate to Stripe Right Incorporated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. You got the?
Yep. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve accounts payable warrants the amount of three hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-three cents for and no payroll benefit warrants for the date ending October 17th, 2022.
I would second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to pay the bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, new business finance. Board pending. I have one thing for board pending, and that is I believe you gentlemen were forwarded an email from Matthew from the city of the Dalles.
Yes.
About the cost of them managing the contractor and all of the overhead and everything for the airport.
When I looked at the files attached to it, it looked weird and wrong and like he sent us the wrong folder.
That's, that was my thought is that he might have sent us the wrong folder of how he got that. I'm going to reach back out to him. But I told him I'd have a conversation with you guys today and where where we're at. I know Commissioner Soder, while you're still here, you, I understand, had conversations with the previous city administrator. And how did those conversations go? I mean?
I think they went in the, I think really Matthew's just kind of following up on the earlier conversation, which was give us some something to react to. Meaning, I, I mean, for me, in the interest of fairness, if they're if them being the fiscal agent has costs associated with it, where they're doing the AP and the payroll and the managing the contracts and doing all of that, if we're truly in a partnership, those those costs should be shared by both partners. And so I had always said, you know, I'm supportive in concept to the idea of us, you know, fifty-fifty is fifty-fifty. And so I think that's what this was. I too is the same, like I got the methodology and stuff, but the I didn't see actually any documentation about us necessarily. It was about other, it's like, why, the water system, I know how that works now. I know how you, the library, I know how you're allocating resources.
Right, right.
But I didn't see anything for us, and I, that's, that's what I need to see. And I would remain, I think, in the interest of fairness that it is it, the burden should be shared by both equally. The issue I would have, I mean, something that will be something that if we go forward with something is the cost, you know, if we are allocating cost or we are on the hook for sharing our share, you know, our fifty percent of the cost, but we have no input into the, how the cost is being driven, that's going to be problematic. Meaning, and I'm not saying I don't trust them, but I'm basically giving them a blank check. And they're, I'm not saying they would, they would overallocate, but it's, you know, if I, if I have nothing to do with the management of it, then it's, it's a little hard. I don't know what that is. That would just be something we'd have to watch as far as like, is that a reasonable, because we might get to the point where maybe, maybe it's cheaper or we can do it better. Maybe we would do it, because there's no rule that says they have to be the fiscal agent. We've just generally, we don't want it, especially up until now, we got all that for free. So that would be the only thing to watch. It's kind of the same. You know, it's, it's hard to, like if we don't, because those employees, their, their staff are their staff. And we, it's, you know, it's different within where their departments within the same organization, because we do cost allocation, too. Like, this was not a new idea. We do that. I mean, Public Works does it all the time, where they they allocate costs to different projects. And this, and based on what I saw with their water system and the library and stuff, they know how to do it. But again, that allocation is all within the same organization. And we would be outside, and it's just like, you know, are you actually doing that as efficiently? Or is that even necessary, the way you're doing it, and I have to pay for half of it?
Was there ever something in that, like, we never paid, as I understand it?
No, we never have.
Were we doing, like, was it a handshake agreement that we would provide all the economic development support or something? And that was our section, and they're, they're the bill-paying side?
No, but I do think that's, that's the other part of the equation I think we need to look, is they're seeing it from their side. There may be things that we do, that we're providing, that we're, you know, they're not.
Right, and that's where I was at.
Yeah, just make sure.
If you're spending thirty grand, but we're spending fifteen in economic development man-hours.
Right.
We really only owe you fifteen.
Right.
Right.
And I think they, he meant.
Yeah, and meant that there could be, yeah, they're not necessarily aware.
I want to make sure that whatever financial where cost sharing is not the financial for their attorney, if they decide to stick their attorney on somebody.
Right.
We're not, we're not automatically buying in a half of your attorney fees.
Right, and that, that's one of the things that's, you know, because that's a big ticket item, something like that, a consultant, an attorney, what, it's like, because you're choosing to do that thinking, oh, well, they, they're on the hook for half.
I don't want it on everything. I just want it on operations.
Right.
And nothing over.
I'm not saying no, but that's, would be a special circumstance. Are we okay with that? And that's pretty consistent with what it was always like, you know, the concept makes sense. Come back with some evidence, and we'll have a talk about it.
That wasn't the evidence I could make sense of.
No, actually, evidence.
Have our own evidence, too, so that we can have that in the, usually part of it.
And I know something that we haven't done in a long time is a joint meeting between the county commissioners and the city council about the airport.
Sure.
And I think that would be a good idea to do as well. And so you guys would, would be amenable to that. Because I know, you know, the airport's it's a big piece of property and a big piece of the county.
Yeah, no, I think, I think we've done it before. We can, I think it, it was a long time ago. Yeah, well, actually, it was a, we did have a joint meeting when we decided to terminate the, for convenience. The previous two management companies ago. And we had to have a joint meeting to discuss that, and we did, we hosted it here.
Oh, we did. So would you guys be willing to go down to their council?
I mean, it's, I guess it's our turn. If we, I think we can go.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk to Matthew about that as well. Any other questions you guys may have with regards to the airport? Right? Yes, ma'am?
I would just like to note that Chairman Anderson put an agreement that's already been passed. The state just required it to be resigned. Something wasn't in the right order, and that is in the sign holder.
For the airport, yeah. Yeah, we, the secretary's name wasn't at the top. And they have to have a new license signature.
Yeah.
Other things for board pending?
You know me.
It's early.
Can I go first, since I have one just little thing?
And then he's gonna leave.
And then he's gonna leave. No, I'm not leaving. I'll stick through, probably. And it's as much about, we, we had a question last or during the six-year road hearing about Courtney Road and the budget and the dollars. The amount of dollars, so Jeff did get that put together. So I was just going to report back, and then I'll send these figures to the to the questioner, although I, I mean, I, I would feel like that was a public records request, but it's, whether it is or not, I'll, I'll send it. So Courtney Road is budgeted at seven point two million dollars, which is, as we thought. Of that, roughly fifty-fifty, so three million, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars is state grant dollars. The other three point five seven two million are county dollars, which are a mix of road tax, so road fund dollars and landfill dollars, which are a taxpayer, what did I call them last, asset, they're not, but it's not tax revenue. It's, it's, but it is a county asset.
Close to fifty-fifty.
So it's about fifty-fifty.
Of, no, no, of.
It is. It's about road, yeah.
Tax versus, versus landfill.
Landfill. It was about fifty-fifty split, so about one quarter, right, states fifty percent.
So, total cost is seven mil, seven point two.
Two million, right. Yeah, so it's about twenty-five percent, if I'm doing the numbers right. Landfill, about twenty-five percent road tax, so tax, local taxes.
Local taxes, as out of the road is about one point eight million dollars.
Right.
To repave and rebuild the entire road.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, that's all I had.
Okay, so first things first, I would like to get your feedback and permission before I spend my time, if I'm going to be wasting my time or not, that I would like to have our HR manager do some research on lifeline insurance, which I already know is sixty bucks per family. So if you estimate it, times two hundred and fifty employees, you got fifteen grand a year to add such a critter to a benefits package. To get a, a little better number to present for the board, but if you're not interested, then I won't waste my time away. It seems like pennies on the dollar that can save someone a big bill. I know that for a fact. So.
Or is it for the employee or the flat family?
The entire family, sixty bucks. Everybody lives in the house.
Jake could do it for fifty, so. Come fly and pick me up, fly me.
You're going to have state insurance?
Yeah, yeah.
I can't fit you in.
Come on.
I'll bring you a shoehorn and a gallon of.
Yeah, a gallon of Chris. Get me out of there.
So anyway, if you're interested, I'll look into that. Is that a yes?
I absolutely.
I would also personally like to see Mr. Soder use his magic math that you used earlier this morning to put the correct percentile or a counter offer for us to send to them Thursday.
Well, if we take an average.
Right, so do the math presented to us on Thursday.
Okay.
That's, that would be a recommendation I would have.
You did a really good job this way.
Yes. Landfill. So the transfer station people do not get lunch breaks. Republic reached out and would like to provide their employees with thirty-minute lunch breaks, but they can't do that unless we give them approval.
Really?
Yep. So it doesn't need to be in a contract. They just need the board to give verbal approval on the record, on a recording that Republic Services is allowed to give their employees a thirty-minute lunch break at the transfer station. They would do such lunch break at, say, one o'clock, one-thirty, not during lunch hours, because they're actually busy at that time. Later, but right now, they're waving people back as they're eating a sandwich kind of thing. And they would like to give them a half hour of sit-down time, where they would essentially close the transfer station for a half an hour. I know, that was a negative moment. But like start it next year, where they have enough advertising time to let people know that we're closed between one and one-thirty. And that time may differ at each transfer station based off when it's the least busy at each transfer station.
Not to get into their business, can they, can they do a rotation where they could keep it open, you know, where it's like?
Person, about two.
Or are they, the staff levels are such?
The staff levels, it might only be two people on, so, you know, it's already kind of somebody shoving chicken in his face. So the other guy's trying to go back somebody up and run the pay box and, and
Right.
That's kind of currently what happens, but as they start getting other staff, because people are sick or whatever, then they start having issues of the guy holding the sandwiches, he's doing this, and it.
I mean, I, I think everybody should get a lunch. The only, the only show I would have is that they make sure they, as long as it's, it is a set time that they advertise well in advance so the public know. Because like I know, in Lisle, I can't, I can't go to the post office between two and two-thirty, which is always when I come through Lisle.
And we all know you can't go to the transfer station on Monday.
On Mondays, so if I know, I don't care.
One and one, right, that's what I'm saying. I told, that's what I told him. I want a set time.
Not this week, it's this time next week, because it's already, I, I call before I come, because.
He did ask that it might be like one to one-thirty at one place, but at one-thirty to two to another place. But you're going to know what transfer station hours to. So I didn't have too much of an issue with that.
Chris Anderson wants to chew on that for a while.
There's two employees in there. I would much rather, you know, and I only go to one transfer station, so I don't know how it operates the one up here, but I mean, and granted, I think everybody deserves a break, and everybody deserves to have their lunch break. But one guy can run the transfer station, and the other one can, you know, he's still going to be there likely, and he can take his half hour, and the other one can take his half hour. But shutting the transfer station, like I worry at, at our transfer station, the safety impact, because it's going to go out to the highway, and then it's going to start going down one forty-one for the buildup of all the vehicles, based on the number of vehicles that come. And that would be my concern.
Well, I, I could see that if you have fifty people show up that don't realize it's lunch break. But that's the point of the education, and I would also say that you might have a safety issue at the transfer station if the guy's not paying attention to what's going on, because he's taking cash right now. And he's not paying attention out there, because you're down to one person on the ship. So I, I don't, I don't want to get in and micromanage their business at the transfer station, nor do I deem myself a safety expert. I'm just relaying the, the opinion of the business that they would like to, their employees are requesting a half-hour break. And so I don't know, it's either a yes or a no, or I don't know that there's a third option.
Well, I mean, that would be the third option, is just to have that question, that conversation. Can, can you have them take a lunch, but can, can a transfer station operate with just one person for short, for, for a half hour?
I can go back and get clarity on that question, if you want.
I would, I would definitely, no, because that would be my preference, because, I mean, I've been at the transfer station, I've seen it operate with one person.
I know it does. It's just a matter of whether it does safely or not. Let me make sure I don't have anything else. I don't think so. Contract. You had questions you sent me away with on the contract. You have a new presentation. The HHW, which, actually, I'll just run through this the way it is. Waiving the problem waste in the threshold tipping fee. Did you lose that one already?
No, hell, that just happened.
He found the other one he was looking for.
I just found the other one. Keep going. It's around here. No, 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 keep going.
I don't have another one. So actually, I'll just start at the top. The we already figured dropping the quarterly administrative fees, that's already fine, didn't have any questions there. The waste fee, you wanted to bump the two dollars up to two fifteen. That's done. It didn't change the ton numbers at all.
What, what did it change the, the value, the number number?
The totaled.
On your sheet.
I would have to go bring up my mathematical form. It was like a twenty-five thousand or something.
Found it.
It made like a twenty-five thousand, I think, difference.
Currently, but if it goes, if we get more tons, it'll go up a lot more.
And so same idea, they wanted to drop the two point one eight down to two point one seven five to make up for that adjustment.
Just moving it right along.
Just stop.
Just add it and, and make it and stop. So we're fine on there. Deleting the problem waste in the threshold tipping fees, they're actually, they could go either way. Did you find it now?
Yeah, I found it. I said I found it right once you arced up the door.
Yeah. Not yet.
We talked to him about that.
He disagrees that it can be. Right? Well, I know, we have asked, and he says, no, you can't.
Right?
Right? So, anyway, moving on. The, those two sections, the problem waste fees and the threshold tipping fees, equate to about thirty thousand a year, and they're already included in our quarterly fees. So it's already included in the four dollars and thirty cent number, but if you were a stickler on that to leave it in, it would essentially mean they would still have to pay quarterly fees, just seven thousand five hundred dollars a quarter.
Right.
To, to make up the difference of the thirty, but they're like, it's not a make it or break it for me, whatever you wanna do. So when they sent this back, they did remove them, I'm assuming, hoping that we're okay with removing them, but if we said, hell no, you're leaving them in, then, then say fine.
How did your conversation go about the new waste that they, the new company?
Okay.
I just was hoping to iron that question as a yes or no out, before I moved on to the next one.
Okay.
The next one on there, number eight, is the landfill rate increase, which when we did the numbers that requested Commissioner Sodder to do the math, based on CPI, whatever, it actually comes out to a dollar twenty five, and not two dollars, so that would mean it would go to eight twenty five next year, and then every five years have a CPI adjustment after that.
Okay.
The next one is the one you're talking about, number nine, is HHW, or House Hazardous Waste. Essentially, when you guys were talking about whether we were gonna get paid for the new waste coming into the county. Article three, or of amendment, amendment number three, which was done back in two thousand thirteen, I think, the requirement shall not apply to new acquisitions by the contractor. So when the previous board did amendment number three, they allowed a change in there that we wouldn't get fees for any acquisitions of the contract, so the answer is no. As he's reading, I'll leave that with you, and you can continue to go over that. So, yeah, any new, but the other thing that's in there that's kind of sketchy is that because of that, they can actually go buy themselves a new landfill.
That's.
And ship all their trash to that landfill, and not to our landfill anymore, and we're kind of screwed. So let's hope they don't ever choose to do that.
Well, that would be my question about the other land.
They'd have to buy it, it'd have to be an acquisition. But yes.
Is this, is this your interpretation, their interpretation, or?
Mine and theirs, and we can get legal opinion of it as well.
Yeah.
So if you would like legal interpretation of that, it can be done. The other thing that changes in there about halfway through that number nine, you'll see it says county shall bear all costs associated with the transfer, blah, 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 blah. And I have to flip to my other.
Oh, my gosh.
They changed the wording on that, and I don't know if they did it on purpose or whatever, but it, it did say they had to pay, and now it says we have to pay. And I don't know if that's a issue for you guys. I know I'm getting into the weeds on you. So that's something I think we should think about, it says county bears all costs for transportation and disposal. Now, understand that this HHW, we pay that out of the solid waste recycling grant. So it's not county tax for your dollars anyway. So I, I don't see that it, the change in wording matters, but it essentially just gives them permission to use whatever contractor or site they wanna use. The other thing is, with amendment number three, on what we get a tip in free from, you have to understand most of that toxic stuff that's going to that company isn't going into our landfill, so we only get the dollars if it goes into our landfill, not if it goes into, in this case, the one that's up in Hanford, or whatever goes up there, so we don't get.
And then we have to pay them for it.
Well, yeah, but we're, it's coming out of the recycling grant, it's not us actually paying for it, the grant's paying for it.
As long as we have the grant.
Correct. Which, that's part of everybody's grant, apparently. So I didn't see a big issue there, but if you want legal interpretation on whether they can do that or not.
Commissioner Christopher, we may have differentiating of legal opinion interpretation about having this discussion in open or executive. We're trying to run that down, can we set this aside for right now until we until we get something?
Are you getting something today?
Trying to right now.
You think there's gonna be a change of a thing?
Sounds like there potentially was.
Interesting. I was essentially done anyway, there was one more item that was easy, so. You can't, they, they don't care, I mean, this is, should be pretty much after the prosecutor for legal.
I guess, so we are renegotiating the contract. No luck? No luck? Okay. I wanna talk about this.
Right.
And I definitely, if we can do that in an executive session, I would.
That one, I see.
Definitely like to.
I get that.
Did you wanna see this? Are you, are you still working it? Oh.
No, I'm working on numbers, on different, different.
A new one that you guys haven't, I got the twelve roll offs, but then I also went back after talking to code compliance and asked for two hundred vouchers annually. And he was willing, but he was only willing to do them at the Goldendale place. He wanted to know where most of our code compliance nuisance abatement was. Apparently, they'd done vouchers before, and they'd had, problems with fraud, and people printing their own vouchers and whatnot, so they wanna be able to do a ledger, a hand account. Code compliance would also have a ledger, so they can make sure they're not fraud, and since most, seventy percent of the code compliance cases that would be getting a voucher are actually around the Goldendale station, that's the only station they would be willing to give vouchers to. That was them, not me. That's more than we had before.
I know, but it's not fair, and equitable to the across the county. Good point. Sorry, he's not listening.
I'm not, I'm listening.
He's on short, chart, chart timings.
Say, I guess if I went back and argued that to not make it specifically someone transfer fee, their answer is either yes or no.
That's true.
It's still all going to one transfer station, they just have to do books at each transfer station and do audit reporting, and because their biggest issue with that is fraud.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. But, but you know.
All the different staff to know which signature is what, and essentially, if they can do it at Goldendale, the Goldendale staff guy signs it, and he's gonna know what his signature looks like. If the Goldendale guy signs it, or Steve signs it, and then George gives it to somebody in the office, that guy's just gonna take it and show it in the cash register, he's not gonna look at it. If the drone signature, that becomes fraud, which is why they wanted it done out of one transfer station, whichever one did the most compliance, or had the most code compliance.
But we don't know where that's gonna be.
Well, according to code compliance, it's here.
Right now, based on who's turning people in and all that, right now, with the current climate, I could ship to the other side. I can tell you that there's plenty of spots at the county, not just around Goldendale.
I guess I'm just thinking two hundred vouchers a year is better than no vouchers a year, because you can get the, the roll offs, and that's all fine and dandy, but then you have the people that don't have, they, they have the trailer or the truck that can haul it to the dump, they just don't have the money to pay the dump at, you know, forty bucks for their trailers for the dump, and if you have four vouchers, you should, rather. So we're gonna be able to get people's properties cleaned up, that wouldn't have gotten cleaned up without a drop box, without using the drop box.
Got it.
That's the plan with the dump.
Okay. I'm, it's not a hard holdup for me, I just, if I'm possible.
I get the, yeah, I get the not equitable across the counter thing.
Yeah, but it is, if the, the vast majority of the issue is serviced out of the Goldendale transfer station. What was their thinking as far, I mean, you said the fraud, but.
That was it, because that was the question, is, is where's the majority of your cases at, and it's seventy percent of the, the trash stuff is, would.
Would fall in this, out of the Goldendale transfer station.
Between seventy and eighty percent, so it was like, then they're like, well, that makes sense, and that's what we expected, was the first comment, that's what I thought. Because they've done these vouchers before, apparently, and have had so much fraud in them that they had to pull them back and stop doing them.
And so how is that, how is that issue gonna be alleviated by only using the Goldendale transfer station?
Because I think the thought was that they can have a ledger, each one is written down
Oh, has a.
by the address, not by the name of the user, so when the user comes in and drops it off, they have to show proof of essentially residency at that code compliance address, and the voucher is gonna be signed by the guy working at the transfer station.
Right.
So it's like you inspecting your own signature.
Right.
You're, you're gonna know if you sign that or not, and, and whether it's fraud or not, you know, in that regard, is how it was explained. I don't know if that's a super sticking point, we can go back if we want to go back. But that, that's essentially the changes, all the big stuff is, the alternate contractor can use alternate disposal site. There's wordage in there that they must have permission. Site by site permission. So they can't just up and do forty.
No, it does, it says first consult, it does not, does not create permission, that's not a shall. It just says the contractor first consults with the county.
Okay, let me have some time to digest this.
But, yeah, I think we need to change the wordage on that.
And, yeah, if I have any other thoughts, changes, get it to, well, we can talk about it on Thursday.
Yep.
Okay?
Do you wanna keep that for, how do you wanna, if you want legal advice on that, I'm fine with that, but. Take that and.
Yeah, why don't you talk to the PA about that?
Your legal advice, it's your legal advice.
This is your contract negotiation, buddy. Do I come forward?
I, I can be happy to do so, but I don't know that I'm gonna articulate your concern as, you're gonna be able to articulate your concern.
You're very articulate, you'll do a great job, I have faith in you.
Do, do, okay.
I just had heard some conversation regarding Lifelight, and so.
I don't know what you're talking about.
I thought I'd come down.
Huh?
You talked about Lifelight?
I did.
Just a little bit ago?
Yes, he did.
I'm not going that crazy.
Yes, I, I was receiving board permission to speak to you about checking on the cost to provide Lifelight family coverage to all of our employees, which I already kind of know the cost, but.
So Lifelight is included within our medical coverage if it's medically, or necessary.
Very separate Lifelight coverage.
We, there is separate coverage, it's seventy five dollars a year, there's no government discount, because I had checked into that. They're sending me updated brochures, I inquired the end of August regarding the membership and the updated information, and so employees, well, Clickatack County residents, are able to get an annual, it's seventy five dollars per family per year for coverage for Lifelight, and that's in addition to.
Were you saying that our current healthcare coverage fully pays Lifelight?
It covers it if it's medically necessary.
How do you, how do you define that?
Yep, that's my question.
I would think, like, if you're having a heart attack, or there was an accident, and they have to come in and get you, then that would be.
Talking to Lifelight in Oregon, which covers the five states, can't use it to transport, you can't use it to move from hospital A to B, you can't use it for, or an ambulance isn't necessary, but it's not like for death, you know? It will, or all those types of things.
Right.
Has to be requested by a doctor or the facility.
No, it's pretty much if you're in an accident, and you're getting taken to a hospital, you're not going from one hospital.
It's a, right, it's not transport, it's life and death or else.
That's okay, I mean, it's.
But it's, it's a matter of, I guess I would say, covered by our own insurance, or is it, are they gonna find a gray area that they're only covering part of it? That's an interesting question.
And is it just Lifelight, because what, what's the other company name?
Medical Teams Northwest or something, but they're mostly Tri-Cities, Spokane, Seattle. It's a totally separate deal, and they do not affiliate with Lifelight, one doesn't cross over to the next.
I think, I think it's the coverage, so if it's necessary, I don't think it matters.
Who it is, it's, it's any.
But I can confirm that for you, but as long as it's medically necessary, then our insurance would cover it. You'd have to pay the out of pocket expenses until you reach your maximum.
Your little two thousand dollar number, or whatever it is.
Or so.
That would be my.
And is that for families or just employees?
It would be if they're dependents under your medical coverage.
They're covered, they're covered, if they're not, they're not.
Right. But Lifelight does have the family plan for seventy five dollars a year.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, but why go the family plan if you're telling me the insurance covers it at a hundred percent? Then it, then you almost double it for no reason.
If it's medically necessary.
Well, they're both kind of, if it's medically necessary.
Yeah, I don't think my seventy five dollar one is not like, I wanna run up to have an appointment to Seattle.
No, the seventy five dollar one doesn't cover transport type stuff either.
Either.
The seventy five dollar one doesn't cover the transport?
No, no, it's only medically necessary, it isn't, I got glaucoma, and I need to see my, this is, you're having a heart attack, you need to go, or you just got a, like, accident, you need to go. If they could take you by ambulance, you need to go by ambulance.
So it, so that's what, if it's medically necessary, it would cover your flight to.
Wherever.
Always.
Doesn't cover the full amount, is my question.
Minus the two thousand.
Right, minus the. That's where I would.
One thing we might check is, because I have both.
Right, but if that's.
But I think we're, I have air and ground. We're gonna check to see if this is just air or and ground.
So Lifelight is just air.
Yeah, like.
So for ground coverage.
In Washington, Lifelight is just air, in Oregon, they actually do ground as well, if you're in certain counties, including yours.
Lifelight has ground?
No, no, just covers.
I was gonna say, the, the word flight is literally in their name.
Yeah, what?
For a reduced lower twenty bucks or something like that, you get brown coverage as well.
Life, round.
Okay, for any ambulance service, oh, for like mid Columbia, whatever.
Like me, when I had to get a drive to the airport for three thousand dollars, that would then be covered.
Would have been covered.
Separate, so it doesn't work, it doesn't pay us.
Find out more, please.
Yeah, if, if all we're gonna do by giving everybody actual Lifelight insurance is double coverage now, then I'm not interested, but if our insurance has a gap, then I am interested. So I guess I need to know, is it fully covered, do they cover the same patients at the same, you know?
They cover, benefits cover you, your spouse, or domestic partner, and dependents claimed on your income tax return.
Right. Right.
There are no out of pocket expenses for emergent medically necessary.
And that's from Lifelight or is that from the healthcare insurance?
That's from Lifelight.
Right, right, but I know that's how I'm covered on Lifelight. My question is how am I covered on my insurance? What is my insurance in there with fine print? Just see if there's a gap between the actual insurance and the Lifelight. So. Cause believe it or not, I'm still getting bills from Lifelight because they haven't recognized I even have insurance yet. And/or that I have Lifelight coverage from them yet. So I haven't, I haven't found out who's paying my bill.
This came up with one or two of the bargaining units and y'all said, no, we declined to provide that coverage because it's covered under the health insurance. So if this something you want to pursue, we'd need to bargain it with all five bargaining units. Can't use unilaterally implemented.
Well, again, I, I need to know that there's a gap. Cause it's not sounding like there's a gap, it's not sounding like it's needed.
And I'm not speaking to whether we should or shouldn't, I'm just saying if you decide to continue, then we need to read.
You have to read after.
Cause we told them no seven months.
We're already doing it.
So it's just a process.
Okay.
Did you get it figured out?
I guess so.
More and more to, more to come?
I'll look into it.
Just double check with the healthcare coverage and see if there's anything on the healthcare side, I know the Lifelight side. Okay, thank you. Boy, you really are cheap, you couldn't even give us color.
Didn't save money, honey. I'll let you guys read that. I met with the city of Golden Dale, so once you read that, I'll. We can talk about it. How are you today? How are you today?
Good.
Good.
I just left this with my employees.
Question.
An answer. Um. What, just for, as a layperson, we have criminal case filings and then we have the other, which I guess are civil, civil case filings? What are the, I mean, cause that really is the heart of the issue, is are you breaking it up based on, it's like, I don't know what those other. So, so where it says criminal and civil case filings, right? In the middle section, the criminal case filings, you can see that there's a discrepancy, right?
Right, that's what I'm having trouble with. It's like the numbers don't add up, it's like the totals.
So the numbers in the middle are what we provided to the cities, which is what Prosecutor Cornell gave to us. Right. From his seeing that he can pull, right? What the, what they provided was the total filings. And so, as I can break that down, the 2475 criminal, that includes total filings. It's not criminal filings, it's the total number like papers and, and if you get a speeding ticket and you pay your speeding ticket, that's a filing. Whether it's in the city doesn't, doesn't matter. And so a lot of pieces go into that. So I received this yesterday at like 5 o'clock. And I was going into the meeting with the city of Golden Dale, City Council at 7 o'clock. And I want to say thank you to our finance director, Bartley. She updated and put this together after work last night before the meeting. And adding adult probation and to making it so it's something that I could hand out at the meeting. And I got to give her props for working extra to do that. So the meeting last night, you know, if we went by the numbers that were given to us by the prosecuting attorney of the number of criminal case filings and that was costs. For East District Court, their cost would be $265,390 a year.
Whose cost?
That would be the old city of Golden Dale.
City of Golden Dale. $265K and they currently pay 36 grand.
Uh, no. Our budgeted for them is 12,000 this year. 2021 actual was 26,000.
See him 36.
That's probation.
Oh.
We're over here.
Up here, yeah, up on the top. East District City cost share.
So that would be, and that's more in line with when I started breaking everything down, right? On currently, based on the criminal case filings, this side, this one here, from what the prosecutor gave us, right? I took the total cost of East District Court. And for Golden Dale, there, they had 138 criminal cases, which averaged out to $190 per case. But the county, for all the cases that we had, the 251, that averaged out to $2,734 per case. And so when you look at that, that's a huge, huge subsidy that we've been providing. And if we use the numbers, the cities want to use the total number of filings. They, you could, you read it, that's what they want.
Is that all of the cities or the ones on that side? What does Golden Dale want to use? Are they all in cahoots or not in?
Well, of course, they're all going to be in cahoots. They want to pay, I mean, they're, they're faced with budget problems just like us and they want to pay the least amount as possible. I, and I think the city of Golden Dale disagree with part A of what the city believes that in essence, we're required to provide municipal court services. I don't believe that's the case at all. I think there was an erroneous interpretation. And the rest of it just comes down to numbers, right? And so the city of White Salmon, you know, and Benjen together paid $9,432 last year for all the municipal court services. If we broke that down, Benjen was $176 per case, White Salmon was $183 per case. Where West County ours was $2,930 per case. The cities are willing to do, take the total numbers based on their percentage and paying their percentage of our costs, our budgeted costs. So that's how they came up with the 20,000 for Benjen, 23,000 for White Salmon. That would then equal 67,423 for Golden Dale.
How much for?
And that, a lot of that is, is because the court costs, East District Court costs are much higher than West District Court.
So this is their math and their offer, or this is our ask and our offer?
That's their, 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 that's what they would like. So.
That's, that's, I know, I'm reading that that's what Benjen and White Salmon would like. I'm confirming that you're saying that's what Golden Dale would like.
Come on forward, you guys. Have a seat. Yep, you bet.
Go ahead.
News Service, this is Director Brown.
Get up, we're going to.
Lisa Brown, nice to meet you.
Nice to see you again.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Mark, Jake Van.
We just had a great meeting.
Good.
Got a lot of great things going on. And we had a beautiful evening and morning here. We went to Bake My Day Cafe for breakfast and had a great, had a great walk. So yeah, thank you.
Great. And yes, the weather is always like this here.
It'd be lovely.
Well, what can we do for you? I know you probably don't hear that very often. It's usually, what can we get from you?
Yes, well, we're really, I think for us at the Department of Commerce, we have the short name, but we have this broad portfolio, right? Housing, local government, infrastructure, energy, community services and economic development. And so we are embarking on how to really, our, our mission is to strengthen communities, how to really be in more communities around the state and how to build those relationships so it isn't high where the government and come to the website, right? To see what projects you might apply for if you can navigate through all the different pages. But this is really part of our effort just to understand how to connect the resources we have to the communities that can really benefit from that. So we had a great meeting just now. And understood several different things that we can work on together, from childcare to creative economy to the economic development projects. So we.
I could add just one little piece that we heard from downstairs, and I think it's really important is a lot of times at the state, we don't get to see the project end. You know, what, what was the impact of the project? How did it help your citizens? So the airport need because of Lif flights and other things, you have a critical need to expand your airfield there. And hearing those stories are much more powerful than just saying we need to extend the runway by 100 feet or whatever, you know, whatever it is. So having that personal story on a project, helping us capture those in, in a project description is really powerful.
Well, as someone that just flew out on a Lifelight, it means a lot you can do to help.
Yeah.
I got flown to Boise, so.
Oh, wow.
Those, you know, those stories are just more powerful than, I mean, the data's important, the metrics are important, but having those personal stories are really powerful.
Commerce, I mean, you have this broad portfolio in what you do. What can you talk about in terms of the direction of where you think commerce is going and how we're going to get there? And thank you for coming around for the listening session. I think that's great. You're in great hands between Mr. McClure and the PUD and everyone else, all the community leaders. But yeah, like, where, where is commerce going to be in 20 years?
Well, the key things that we are working on right now are a little less, have a little less of a long-term view and a little more of a short to medium-term view. One of the biggest ones is that I brought when I came on about three and a half years ago, is a focus on regional economies instead of just the whole state of Washington. Because it's one thing if you say the state of Washington is number one in this or number four in that, but especially having been and served in the legislature from Spokane for many years, we really have all these regional economies and they have distinct opportunities and distinct challenges. And so we have been building a community engagement and outreach team that, where people are actually based in the regions. And we're, we're now up to six. And I see that as being one of our key initiatives to keep moving that forward. A second major initiative that we're engaged in is Representative Banky from the Tri-Cities sponsored this bill to create a manufacturing council and commerce is supporting that council and the set of recommendations it's going to make to the legislature. But the, it has the very ambitious goal of doubling manufacturing jobs in the state in 10 years. So that's a very big ambitious level to reach. But, so we're breaking down, supporting that council in coming up with the recommendations around that. So that's another, another key one. We have sector leads right now that serve as a liaison between the private sector and the state, both the governor and the legislature. So we have them in our traditional legacy industries like aerospace and maritime and ag products and timber and tech. But we're, we're building out that portfolio a little bit more. So, we have a new sector lead in the creative economy. We're looking at the maker economy, things like that. And the idea is that those sector leads serve to look at the, the needs of the industry and where it's going and help represent that to the legislature and to the governor. So, for example, right now, our sector lead for aerospace is involved in an aviation and airport kind of infrastructure council to look at those, to look at those needs that kind of go beyond, you know, what does Boeing need, right? And subcontractors, which are very important for both Boeing and Airbus. But, but more fundamentally, what about regional airports and, and the whole, where is aviation and space going in the state? So, that's just a little flavor of some of the, some of the key things that, that we're working on. We are, on the capital side of the equation, we know that for small communities, the capacity to actually administer the funds to apply for them and then administer them after you get them is, is challenging. It's not an easy process. So, we're looking and advocating with the legislature for more technical assistance and capacity building to improve that partnership with local governments. Mark, you might want to mention what you've been doing in that area.
Yeah, so just in, in quickly looking at it, and this is probably something that will take some time to kind of process. But administratively, could a council of government support the communities within their area on the administrative side of things? Even though the benefits going to the, a certain city, town in your district, how in your county, how could we elevate some of the administrative responsibilities to a centralized group to help that capacity, address some of those capacities so that a small town doesn't have to deal with managing federal or state funds, those types of things? One thing I'd love to address though is in my mind, and it's been in my mind for quite a while is how do we get in front of infrastructure and housing for your 20-year outlook? How can we start predicting now what does the population growth look like in, in the regional pieces? How can we start articulating those needs legislatively? So, they know that in communities, that the need for expanded infrastructure and housing and all that goes with it. So, there's a pipeline view of what's coming. So, we're not surprising every two years what our needs are. So, we have a more predictive way of thinking about the 20-year outlook instead of responding to it all the time.
Great. Yeah, follow up with that. Well, first off, Director Brown, thanks for coming and the deputy. To that, what, I mean, I guess first, a little thing as far as with local flavor here, your idea as far as council of governments or in many ways, we already function like that. Like the county quite often tends to be, we help out our municipalities and we have a lot of that administrative burden where we, you know, and to us, that's just normal. Where we're, we kind of have the capacity, we, we, we don't. I see Director McClure. No, we don't, but we.
More so.
More so than our cities do. And so, that's a, that's, and I think that is a great approach. I know there's, there's lots of municipalities, small groups across, especially across Eastern Washington that's in the same place we are, where quite often the county's the big dog, meaning that they have the staff and the resources, or they have more than these little. And we, we do really help out our cities with that, where we'll provide technical assistance. We'll help them through, we'll be the applicant, even though we're just going to be a pass-through or something like that. Back to you, as far as the, the housing and infrastructure, that is absolutely critical. And I, the, the, the part that scares me a little bit is that if we had an actual, real number that we were at least, you know, going to the legislature as far as this is, we're looking out 20 years, it is so frightening that I'm afraid it, they'll, you know, they'll be, as a former legislator, it's like, we'll be, you know, in, in the fetal position around, oh, how are we going to solve this? But we have to figure out a way to do it because, you know, it's.
They're still coming, I hear.
They're still coming. We cannot, you know, we have, and a lot of our, you know, we've, we've gone through a process to try to identify where we can, kind of what are the, what's the restrictions? What is, what's throttling back? Why is it, why can't we seem to get any housing? And so, we're kind of, we're, we're working on that locally. And a lot of it does come down to infrastructure, is that we have a lot of our places that we, you know, we, we would like to see available for development that can have either legacy infrastructure. You know, it was just different in the past and now it is so expensive that it is, it just doesn't pencil out. And so, I'm, I come from a construction background. Before I was a commissioner, I was a general contractor. And I keep thinking, why doesn't, the industry should fix this? I mean, there is a ready, you could build and build and build and you would have, there's, there's five people for everything you build are standing in line. So, what is it? And so, that's what we've really been busy trying to identify. What, what are those factors? And it, a lot of it is around infrastructure. It's just the cost of infrastructure now is so disproportionate to what it used to be that our typical ways of how we would solve this in the private sector, they, it just doesn't work. It doesn't pencil out and the, the folks aren't doing it.
Little bit of help there. We're, we're looking at how we might move on this a little bit more. But the CHIPS program or basically it's helping local governments with the developer. So, the local government applies and we can help you reimburse what the sites who were hookups, all those other pieces that used to be developer costs. So, there, we're, we're really trying to scratch at that because, yeah, I, I, same. I grew up in a construction family and I get some of those developer issues.
Right.
And I think it's really important even like permitting timelines, other things that we can help think about and work with those types of issues as we move forward.
Right.
So, Dave Anderson, it's great, he's our growth management guy. Really, really working on thinking through some of those things.
Okay. And I think we under, under particularly, you know, we have more headwinds than many just because we have, we have the National Scenic Area, which brings its own set of, it constricts as far as like we are, you know, and I, it's a good thing to try to, try to, you know, encourage development where the infrastructure is into the municipalities and the cities and the scenic area. But the, the, another impact of that is, is made, it has made it very desirable and the market is setting the rates. And it's not, you are not going to spend, you know, a quarter of a million dollars, $300,000 on a lot and build an affordable house on it. That's just not happening. And at least, although it, maybe it's affordable, might say, but I don't know what those people do, but. So, we, yeah, we've, we've, we've definitely got some, in some ways, unique, at least in this part of the state to us right here. So, I'll defer to my seatmates.
I don't have anything else to add other than you pretty much hit it right there. And for me and, and being the commissioner on this side and for Goldendale and beyond, is, is you start driving up housing prices from people moving into the White Salmon on the other end. This is important to our community here. They, they look at a $1,200 rent is now they're living on the street. And the rent prices here get jacked up because of the rent prices, you know, an hour away and, we got to find a solution is all I know because it is getting bad.
It's, it's huge. We, we think this issue of housing supply at all levels, but particularly middle housing is absolutely, got to be a top priority. And I, I wish I knew more.
It's kind of a policy too because it's, does government get involved in building the infrastructure and the water lines and the streets and the whatever? And whether you're doing tax increment financing or whatever to try to make the money back after the build? Or does government change its policy and say, okay, now we're going to allow tiny homes? Or we're going to allow second homes on 20-acre parcels?
Right.
So that we can lower prices that way in, in control. And so, part of that's a government thing and part of that's a policy thing and.
Yeah. It's definitely the case.
We've been thinking about those, all of those. Yep, absolutely.
And then no matter which way you go, somebody's going to yell at you. Yeah.
Thank you guys for, for coming up.
Yeah, absolutely.
And thank you for coming to our beautiful county and our beautiful slice of paradise.
Yeah, thank you. We have, we have several things to follow up on and we're really, also have a good relationship with your legislators, especially Senator King and I, who served together in the Senate. So, it's, definitely if things come up, he gives me a personal call.
That's good. We, we appreciate, we, we do appreciate that. He's, he's a very strong advocate for us and I, I appreciate, you know, he is our, and then I am frankly, our former Senator Honeyford is, is.
Of course.
Is, we feel very well, we're very fortunate. We're very well.
We have two senators.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, yeah.
Well, I don't know. They, they say once a senator, always.
Always a senator.
I still, I still get calls from Senator Parlet, from Winachi as well. Of course, I think of her as Senator, former, et cetera. So.
We have potential here. So, any help you can give, this is fantastic.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you both. Thank you. Okay. Mount Rainier Room upstairs.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, they would like one of us to.
Chairman's choice?
It's the chairman's choice. Well, who wants to?
I'll go.
Yeah, see, I think it's probably.
It's in my district.
I think so. I don't know. They'd have to kill us if they told us, so.
Wild guess. Are you guys going to be here when we're back? When I'm back? Maybe.
Maybe.
Yeah, would you leave if I get up?
Did you have much else for, for the?
No, other than I would really like a clerk to take down your wording of what you're asked is for the prosecutor so that I don't mess up your wording on that legal opinion.
Got it. Okay. One other thing, I think I even wrote it down. Yes. One thing I wanted to, I want to talk about it. Without him present. Oh, just wait. It'd make more sense.
Oh, that's this one.
All of my stuff can wait.
Okay.
How about yours?
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good. It can wait till Thursday.
All right. Well, then we may as well adjourn five minutes later.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to adjourn our regular business meeting. We have a workshop scheduled 9:00 AM this Thursday.
I will step down and second the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adjourning? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone who signed in, who listened in, who was a part of today. Please get back and we'll, we'll see you Thursday here or we'll see you next Tuesday online.